Yes.
We're on. We're live. Okay. I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, July 7th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would like to say, I believe we had a very safe 4th of July weekend. But we would like to put Pat Meister in our prayers and also Jim Burke. They are recuperating. And you'll be able to sit down. If they could please have the roll call.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponse.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, we have Elizabeth Hole on the line, and she is representing our legal counsel this evening. Elizabeth, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say something real quick because somebody brought it up to me on the street? They're having a hard time hearing us, so please make sure that you're talking into the mics. I know I have a habit of turning and not staying, but they're...
Yes. Okay, announcements or written communications?
I have one written communication. It is regarding a letter that was sent to the Catalina Island Medical Center board members. And then I'll save all my announcements during City Manager.
Okay, so we have a presentation this evening, and Denise, would you like to open that up?
We have Dr. Daniel Davis as part of the Catalina Medical Center, and he is on a conference call and still has a PowerPoint presentation ready for us, so we welcome Dr. Davis back.
Yes, thank you for being here. Okay, Dr. Davis, take it away.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, and you can see the slides?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for having me again. It feels like years have passed since I was last there, and the world keeps changing under our feet. But this is a good time to do an update, which was actually scheduled a couple of weeks ago before we've had some activity here on the island, so I've modified it a bit and included a section at the end to try and explain a little bit about how we're trying to handle the latest cases and the case control or case contact tracking. But I imagine that there will be a lot of questions, and in fact, one of the suggestions that I'll make upfront is that perhaps the city council help us organize a special session for business owners, particularly those that interface with the public, to explain some of the CDC regulations and how it might apply to their specific situations. But we can talk a little bit more about that at the end. So here you see, I try to find interesting pictures, and this is a picture of the spike proteins of the coronavirus. But one of the things that's been discovered since our last chat was that they are able to cloak themselves in these kind of sugary molecules called glycans, which are represented by those things that look like bushes from a model train set, and by doing so, they can kind of evade or avoid the immune system by surrounding themselves in camouflage. And so some of the drug targets are to try to get rid of those to expose the underlying protein and make it more attackable by the immune system. But I thought it was an interesting picture. And so what we're going to start with is what I'm calling a tale of two states. I'm going to do a little compare and contrast, and I'm going to start with a good example, a model state here, where you see from the beginning of March, there was a rapid rise in cases, but a flattening of the curve, which was the buzz term at the time, and you see that nicely in this graph. And in this particular state, there were very early social distancing guidelines and stay-at-home rules put into place, coordination at a state level of testing as well as distribution of necessary equipment. Hospitals were initially filled with patients, but weathered that initial surge and then were since able to open back up and do more routine procedures. There was a very controlled, regulated return to "normal life," although I don't know that anybody would consider anything normal these days, and continues to be an emphasis on social distancing, the use of masks, et cetera, until this past weekend that you see there on the right. So now we're going to contrast that with the not-so-model state, where we see that the cases continue to go up, and in fact, the steepness of the curve is even greater now this past weekend than it was during what we all considered the heart of the pandemic thus far back in April. And in the press and the general consensus was that there was a lack of preparedness, particularly with regard to the availability of testing, things like PPE ventilators, even some questions about the chain of command when it was a state issue versus a county issue, local public health, even mayors got into the fray. And then in May and June, we had demonstrations, political rallies, the onset of summer activities. Appears that people no longer paid that much attention to social distancing, the use of masks has been challenging. There's an influx of cases from outside the United States because this particular state is a border state, and that state continues to see record numbers of new cases, and the ICUs are running at 85% plus capacity. So here are the two states side by side, and on the left we have California, and on the right we have California. I present the exact same data and polled statements that have basis in fact right out of the headlines to illustrate how frustrating this pandemic is to those of us who are trying to sort of hit a neutral ground and stay true to the science. Because presentations like what you see on the left, which is the exact same data as you see on the right, but presented logarithmically rather than linearly, the left-hand data has been used when we're trying to applaud governmental efforts, support gatherings that including protests and rallies. Small business owners have used graphs like on the left to justify a return to normal business activities, and even hospitals, which were tremendously affected by this, and not in a good way, where most of their money-making activities had to be shut down during the peak, use these kind of graphs to justify reopening. Now on the right, we see those graphs that were trying to establish that the government was reckless and that we returned to normal too soon to criticize people who are gathering together for protests and rallies. People who are retired, like here on the island, didn't particularly want to see an influx of tourists in their peaceful hamlet and would focus on graphs on the right. And to my dismay, even the scientists, whose grant funding and their moment in the sun somewhat depend on being alarmists and painting the worst-case scenario-type pictures, have often tried to stir up fear in an effort to get people to comply with regulations. So this has been a very difficult situation to navigate, and never before have I seen something that's ultimately a medical and a healthcare entity become so politicized and so divisive. And so I'm going to try and bring some of this together and tell you what we think we know and what we definitely don't know. And so these are the graphs that I tend to watch the most. This shows California's cases, the new cases on the left and the new deaths reported on the right. This is presented linearly, so it looks fairly steep, and you see that starting from April over here, and you should see, do you see a pointer on the screen now?
Yes.
All right, so from my pointer, you see pretty much a steady incline accelerating at the end of May, beginning of June, and really accelerating from mid-June up until the present day. And yet we don't see a corresponding increase in deaths. In fact, the general trend has been a downward trend, or at the worst, a flattened trend. And so this has been the subject of tremendous debate as to whether there's suddenly a disconnect. And if you just do some back-of-the-envelope math and look at, say, early April here, where we had about 1,000 new cases presented each day, and around that same time, we had, we'll say around 50 or so new deaths a day. And then we fast forward to, you know, the end of June, where we were almost pushing up on 10,000, so a tenfold increase in cases per day, and yet really only a nominal increase in the number of deaths per day, and in fact, from mid-April, a decrease from about 75 down to about 60. So how do we explain this? Because this is critical to understanding what's happening, how we're going to interpret this. One initial explanation was that there was a lag between the new cases and deaths, and we've known that before, that new cases are often identified early in the course of the illness, and it may take three weeks or so. But I would suggest that, you know, certainly from the middle of May to the present, we've seen a steady increase, and we just haven't seen that increase in the deaths. So for the first time in this pandemic, there's been a disconnect between new cases and deaths. Is it possible that we're doing a better job treating these patients? Well, there have been a few, I wouldn't say leaps forward, but at least steps forward, remdesivir, which had been identified early on as a potential candidate to treat, but unfortunately is only available as an IV formulation, so was only reserved for patients in the hospital. The controlled trials did show a little bit of benefit, not much, maybe a 10% faster rate of improvement. And then in the past couple of weeks, we've heard about dexamethasone, which is a steroid in a study that came out of England, where if you look at all comers, there was a little bit of a reduction in mortality. So over here, they're looking at survival or improvement, and here they're looking at mortality, so it flips, and we want lower. You see a little bit of improvement, which seemed to come from the sickest patients again, those in the ICU needing supplemental oxygen. In fact, it seemed to hurt people who weren't requiring oxygen. But I wouldn't say that you can explain this five-fold or greater decrease in the ratio of new cases to deaths just by these two drugs alone. So there's something else going on, and part of it has to do with the patients being identified, the shift from just testing people who are sick enough to be admitted to the hospital, if you think back into March and early April, to now trying to test everybody, even if they have no symptoms, who may have come into contact with a COVID patient, and that will bring us eventually around to Avalon in a few minutes here, including people who have minimal or even no symptoms whatsoever, who really aren't at risk of dying but are being tested, and some of them are testing positive. So you could think of it like this, if this was the entire population of the United States, right now, we think about 10% of us, represented by that pink circle, have been exposed and have either weathered the virus or are actively fighting it, even if we weren't even aware that we had symptoms. And at the beginning, that little dark blue dot represents the percentage that was actually being tested. And as we've had more availability of testing, we were able to test not just people being admitted, but people showing up to an urgent care or an emergency department, or maybe just people showing up to a clinic with some upper respiratory symptoms, or now patients who don't even have symptoms but may have come into contact with a patient who has COVID. As we get closer to identifying all the cases, even if there hasn't been a net increase in the cases, it would look like there was just because we're identifying more and more patients. And that could explain why the caseload would go up and the mortality really hadn't dropped much at all. Now, kind of on that same vein, there's even been a change in the type of people that we're testing. When you open up roadside testing, where somebody can drive up and get tested, it favors a more mobile population, and we're seeing younger people who are diagnosed, and they tend to be healthier and less likely to go on and die from the disease. And in fact, in many hospitals, including in Catalina Island Medical Center, we're testing everybody who has to come in and out of the hospital on a regular basis, whether it's somebody who's there for work or even patients who are making use of some of the outpatient facilities like physical therapy, where with routine screening, you may be more apt to identify a patient who really didn't think they were sick, but turned out they have positive tests for coronavirus. Now, one of the things that's been questioned in the last couple of weeks is the idea that maybe we're over-reporting, that in fact, in some states, they admit that whether you had an antibody test or an antigen test, that both were being reported at cases, and the possibility that even the same patients are being counted more than once. And that would be a real issue, especially with some of the return-to-work strategies being based on multiple negative tests. And we've already seen something that we'll talk about in a second, where patients may have positive tests going on for months, even when they're really not infectious anymore. But nobody is sure whether those patients are being counted twice or three times or even more, and that we're not really seeing an increase in cases, but instead, we're just seeing over-reporting of cases. Now, one of the theories that I like is that the virus may be different, that it's mutating, and that it may be a virus that's less apt to lead to mortality, less apt to kill you. Our commander in chief suggested that might be the case, and, well, he's certainly not anybody's idea of a medical expert. His reporting of this is not without foundation, because there are geneticists who have identified already that the virus that we see today is different than the one that was here in March, and that in the West Coast in particular, mostly we've seen this mutated form, and that one of the genes that's mutated seems to be one that helps it escape the immune system, so maybe it results in a milder form of the disease. Now, that doesn't sound like it would be something a virus would want, but we tend to assume that this virus is evil and trying to destroy the human race, when in actuality, the virus would love to be asymptomatic. Its way that it passes on from person to person is by making sure that people come into contact with each other as much as possible, and so a form that had milder illness, where we don't pull those patients into hospitals and seal off the walls, but we let them go to bars and nightclubs and touch each other and pass it around. That would be ideal for the virus, and in fact, we have a precedent for this. SARS-1, back a decade or more ago, followed exactly the same pathway and eventually mutated itself into a form that really didn't cause much in the way of human disease at all. So I would love to assume that that's what's going to happen here with SARS-CoV-2, our current coronavirus. But so far, all we have is that first mutation that suggests that we're going to see several mutations. And here we see the head of infectious disease in Italy, who described it slightly differently, saying that he's downgrading it from a tiger to a wild cat. Now, what's interesting is how much political backlash he received, even in Italy, from government officials in Italy and even the World Health Organization telling him to button his lip because that's making people less apt to follow guidelines and more apt to go out and spread it around. And so it's interesting that even other countries have had the same sort of political divisions that we've had here, when somebody's trying to make a clinical observation and tell what he sees as the truth, and is certainly an authority, and is quickly jumped on by public health. Now, this is a graph that I've presented before that shows you that there's a lag time between when you first acquire the infection and develop symptoms, and then get sick enough to go to the hospital, and then get sick enough to die. Three to four weeks may have passed, and so what I've showed you so far looks on either end, when you first get the disease, even before you get symptoms and are now a case, versus waiting until the other end, until we see actual deaths. So is there anything else that we can look at that can give us a clue as to what's going on? What should we be watching as our main indicator that the disease is on the rise or that things seem to be pretty much leveled out? Well, this is one I have showed before, and this is one I have access to as the Riverside County Medical Director for the Fire Department, where we track every week the percentage of emergency department visits and EMS calls for ILIs, influenza-like illnesses. Because for the most part, the patients who get sick enough to go to the hospital, either by ambulance or on their own, have something that looks kind of like the flu. And so you can see over here, in December, January, we saw the actual flu, influenza, that sort of tapered off, then we saw our initial spike in coronavirus cases, and that kind of tapered off. And we are seeing an uptick. It hasn't gotten anywhere near what we saw back here in March, where we're only at about 2% or 3% of emergency department visits and only about 1% or 2% of EMS visits or EMS runs. So we definitely aren't seeing something that parallels the idea that we're seeing record number of cases and that we should be sort of in a panic, that it's nothing like it was back in March or April. Although it is on the rise, so it's definitely something we're keeping an eye on, but not to the same extent that we saw before with that steep rise to 10% of calls and 10% of ED visits being related. But what if we focus on the hospital? That's what we were promised, is that decisions about opening and closing society would be based on the availability of ICU beds. And you'll hear things on the news like 85% or 90% of the ICU beds are full and we're near capacity. And I'll tell you, that's a little bit artificial, because hospitals have to run close to full capacity to survive financially. If you have a hospital that only has 30% of its beds full with 70% capacity for new COVID patients, that hospital's going to go out of business. And in fact, they try and adjust the number of elective surgeries, for example, to make sure that they always have some ICU beds available, but that they keep the hospital as full as possible. And that's what we've seen in the last month or two, is hospitals starting to take their foot off the brake a little bit and allow a return to semi-urgent surgeries and semi-urgent cardiovascular procedures, where patients would end up in the ICU and keeping some ICU beds available for COVID patients. And so this one even is difficult to track because it's somewhat affected by how much the hospitals allow a return to normal activities versus not. But you can see since March, we've had about the same number or same percentage of hospital beds available, maybe a little bit less, starting in the beginning of June, but nothing dramatic in the last month or so. Now, the statisticians are tracking things that are a little bit more nerd-worthy, I guess, looking at how quickly the virus is moving through the community. And one of the things that you've heard is this mutation that I mentioned previously may have increased transmission, whether that's something because of the mutation or just because people who have the virus now may not be as sick and are transmitting it to more people not realizing that they've contracted coronavirus. But either way, we saw at the beginning of June, a little bump up in the transmission rate that circled there in white, and then it's sort of returning back down to the magic number where the transmission is one, meaning that each person transmits to one other person but no more. And ideally, you have a number less than one, meaning that it's starting to decrease in the community. So we are looking at how fast it's transmitted, and it looked like our little peak came sometime around when things were opening up and when we saw a lot of gatherings and activity and stuff, and now it's starting to drift back down. But then we try to use those to predict how many ICU beds is that going to require. And so this again is data from LA County, where you see the best estimates are the white line, the red sort of shaded area, and the pink shaded area, which represents worst-case scenarios. And then you see the actual data with the white dots, which seems to be just chugging along. Now, this particular graph ended towards the middle to end of June, but you can see that even the estimates aren't particularly accurate, and that if anything, epidemiology and public health has a tendency to overestimate. They want to prepare for the worst-case scenario because they're less likely to be criticized. And to tell you the truth, as we used to say, it sells more newspapers. These days, it sells more clicks on the internet or at a minimum, ads on CNN to tell everyone how horrible things are going to be, rather than to be hopeful or to just stick to the data and say, so far, there hasn't been a whole lot of change since the middle of May as far as the demand for ICU beds in LA County. All right, so that brings us to Catalina Island, and I found a very apropos photograph or picture for you here, because we really have seen now in the last week or so, for the first time, what community spread looks and feels like. And as you might expect, there's been a little bit of, panic might be a little bit over-dramatic, but certainly concern, and people wanting to try and keep themselves and their families safe, which is perfectly appropriate. So here's where we're going to try to dig in a little bit and show you the way that we're thinking about it, invite people to comment and ask questions, but like I said at the beginning, I would suggest that we perhaps have a separate sit-down with some of the folks that interface directly with tourists, so they can better understand what the CDC guidelines say and can try and weather this, not just from a medical perspective but from a financial one, because if we're stuck with this virus for another six to 12 months, then we've got to figure out a way to keep our businesses open but keep everyone safe at the same time. I think we've done a good job at CIMC at keeping everybody posted, very nice, clear website. So nine people that have had a nasal swab positive and seven more that have tested positive for antibodies, meaning that at some point, their immune system has seen it at some point in the past. And interestingly, this has not been coming in from tourism, but has been from people who live on the island, often traveling off the island and bringing it back in, and now with a little bit of spread on the island itself. So I think perhaps we probably over-focused on the idea of the tourists being the ones to bring it in and under-focused on the potential for each one of us who travels back and forth to bring it to the island. I think, you know, not to pat ourselves on the back, but in many ways, I look at the leadership of CIMC. leadership of CIMC, and I'm just an employee, so I look at the leaders and really admire what they've done and stepped up in order to provide a service to the island. And I think thus far, the efforts to identify patients, monitor them medically, to make the right decisions about when they need to be sent over town for admission. Those who have been admitted have legitimately needed to be in the hospital for several days, but none have gotten so sick that they've required prolonged mechanical ventilation. And so far, knock on wood, even patients with comorbidities have done well. Our long-term care patients have been sequestered and thus far have been without cases. And to some degree, the hospital activities have started to return to normal, including outpatient visits and services like physical therapy, mental health services, et cetera. We are waiting for point-of-care testing for the antigen, that is, do you actively have the shed of virus from your nasal pharynx? Right now, we have a point-of-care antibody test, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But what I'd like to do is try with pictures to explain the way that I think about this with the knowledge that we're still learning about this virus and all the rules that we used to use have changed, making this difficult. And that's part of the reason why we haven't opened up roadside testing where anybody can get tested at any time. But instead of said, "We'll test anybody," we just want the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the situation, make sure that all the appropriate follow-up is being done, and make sure the right tests are being ordered and that you understand what they mean. So, without further ado, this represents an individual being exposed to coronavirus on day zero and going through some kind of incubation period before they develop symptoms. Now, on the average, that's about four days, but for some people, it goes all the way out to two weeks or 14 days. So that's why, if there is an exposure, you should be quarantined for 14 days, because we will not necessarily know whether you have contracted the virus for that entire period of time. And we'll talk about testing in a second, but it is possible that all of your tests during that incubation period would be negative all the way out until that very last day when you develop symptoms and potentially turn the test positive. Now, let's go back to the typical. So let's say that typical course, four days, and now you start to develop symptoms. Still mostly respiratory, although we're learning a lot of weird things, gastrointestinal symptoms, lack of smell, lack of taste, even some neurologic things. But for the most part, there's going to be cough, there's going to be some shortness of breath, there's going to be flu-like symptoms of fever, achiness, general malaise, and now they've even added a stuffy nose, which this coronavirus, up until now, seemed to bypass the nose and go right into the lungs. But now, maybe because of the mutation, tends to linger in the nose and give you a stuffy nose as well. Now, the best data that we have suggests that once you develop symptoms, that you will be infectious for 10 days. So your period of contagiousness goes from somewhere after the exposure out to 14 days. Now, aren't there some people who have a longer infection? Absolutely. So how do we account for those? Well, what we've done is we've said that to end on that 14th day or 10 days of symptoms, the last three have to be without fever and with at least a decrease in your respiratory symptoms, a decrease in coughing, a decrease in shortness of breath. So that way, we sort of know the disease is coming to a close. And you're going to see that magical 10 days in a lot of different situations. From the onset of symptoms, it's 10 days, or from when you got your test, then we count 10 days and we assume that as long as the last three was without fever, that at that point, you're no longer infectious. Now, one of the things about this virus that's thrown us a curveball is the fact that you can be contagious and not have symptoms, the asymptomatic carrier. For some people, that can be the whole 14 days, and so that creates huge problems. And if everybody was an asymptomatic carrier, then we wouldn't even know about the virus to begin with. But because one person can be asymptomatic and pass it on to another person who's perhaps older with other medical problems, and it can lead to a life-threatening disease, is part of what's made this so crippling. But because of that asymptomatic period, then it's possible that you don't even have symptoms, but you're getting a test. Maybe your boss told you to get a test, but you get a test and it's positive, and so then the 10 days starts from that positive test. So that's why that arrow there on the top changes to yellow, meaning you may get the onset of symptoms and that's the first of the 10 days, or it may be the day that you had the positive test. Now, we may not get the results of the test for a week now, but we count from the day that the test was obtained from your nose. That's the first day when we're counting those 10 days. We'll come back to that. At some point, you go into a recovery phase, you can have a lot of coughing, you can have some shortness of breath that remains, even some neurologic symptoms. But if you're past that initial period and you're without fever for three days, then we call it the recovery period, and at that point, we assume that you're no longer contagious. In an ideal world, the antigen test, the one that's taken from your nose, would track perfectly with your contagiousness. It kind of makes sense, if you've got a virus coming out of your nose that we can find with a swab, wouldn't you be contagious? Well, another weird thing that we don't understand about this one is that some people continue to shed the virus from their nose for months, and we've already seen it here on the island. Now, for a long time, we thought they were still infectious, so we just kept people inside as long as their nasal swab test was positive. And then the South Koreans, who went through this a little earlier than we have here, checked and found that the stuff coming out of these folks' noses isn't viable virus anymore. It's dead, it's little bits and pieces. Why your immune system continues to shed it out of your nose, nobody knows at this point. But for that reason, and the restaurant and hotel owners ought to be listening closely, we can't and we shouldn't rely just on that nasal swab to decide when somebody's no longer contagious. We were hoping that would be the case, and the CDC guidelines still have an alternate route that says if you have two negative tests in a row after you tested positive, if at some point you have two negative tests in a row on back-to-back days, then you're no longer infectious. And that's true. The problem is, for those poor folks who keep shedding dead virus out of their nose, they may not go back to work for two or three or four months. We don't know yet, because there are people who are still shedding it months later. And that's too bad, because they're not truly contagious. But for them, you ought to use the alternate, which is that 10 days as long as the last three didn't have fever. And that may sound rash, but the fact that we're all still wearing masks makes it even safer to do it that way. I have to admit that if I knew somebody was still actively shedding dead virus, I'm not sure I would put my finger in their nose and put my finger in my nose right afterwards, even knowing what I know. But the fact that everybody's wearing masks, I have very little concern, and I'll show you some other data in a second that support that. Now, what about the blood test? We have that on the island, and we have one of the best ones on earth, because Lira, the lab technician or the lab manager, happened to have a good relationship with a South Korean company and had been working with them before. And so we have one of the best ones, and in fact, it seems to pick up cases almost as quickly as the nasal swab. And then the fact that we can get the results back in 20 minutes, we're getting positive results back, you know, days, even a week, before we're getting the nasal swab test back. So one thing you may see us pivot towards is the idea that if you've got symptoms, we may go ahead and test the antibody test at the same time as the nasal swab, if only because if you have symptoms, we can assume that the symptoms are related to the fact that your blood test is also positive, and we get the results so much faster. It really wasn't supposed to be that way, and if we get a point-of-care nasal swab, which is the antigen test, then presumably, we would catch people way back here with a positive nasal swab, even before their antibody test turned positive. But the way that it's explained on TV, which is generally accurate, is that the antibody test tells you that you have had the coronavirus at some point in your past. We just didn't anticipate that here in July, we'd still be waiting a week or longer to get the antigen test back, and that for some patients, when we're swabbing them here, we get a positive antibody test before we can get the antigen test. So be prepared for a little bit of flexibility there, and hopefully, once we get the point-of-care antigen test, we won't even have to think about that. But at any rate, we are starting to test people simultaneously with the blood test and the nasal swab. And the only person that potentially would be impacted negatively by that would be if you had coronavirus back in March, and nobody ever identified it, because we didn't have tests back then. And then you just get nasal allergies, and we swab you and we check your antibody test, and the antibody test comes back positive, and we say, "You've got coronavirus." And then a week later, we get your antigen test back and it's negative, and they say, "Oh, it probably is just nasal allergies, and that thing you had back in March was probably why your antibody test is positive." Now, the antibody test is an interesting one, because many have said, "Maybe we should use that to decide who should work with the tourists." Because if you've got antibodies, technically, you shouldn't be able to get it again. And in fact, you know, as we start thinking about a vaccine, having antibodies may be the thing that tells us that somebody is immune or that they need a booster for the vaccine. And so there's a lot of interest, and we just don't have a lot of time yet. We've only been two or three months out. But already, as you might have seen Dr. Fauci say on the news in the last week, we see some patients whose antibodies seem to drift down and go away fairly quickly. And that may mean that the immunity to this virus doesn't last that long. I'm hoping at least it lasts for a year at a time, so we'd only have to get an annual shot, like the flu shot. But, you know, so far, the data are kind of mixed there. All right, so let's look at this a slightly different way and make this about an individual. So here we have an individual who works with somebody at a restaurant who tested positive. And so the last shift they worked was last Saturday, and that's going to be your exposure day, day zero. So here we are, it's Tuesday, and so the first question is, "Are you having any symptoms?" If so, we start the clock ticking, and we've got 10 days as long as there's no fever in those last three days before you can go back to doing what you would have done before and come out of quarantine. Or maybe you're going to get your test now that it's Tuesday, and we're going to not know the test results for a while, probably not until day 11, but at least we got the test acquired on that fourth day. And if that test turns out to be positive, then again, it's 10 days from today when we got the test. Now, what if this is you instead, and on that 14th day, which would be 10 days after you got the swab, or 10 days after you, or 14 days after you got exposed, that you finally develop symptoms two weeks after you worked with your coworker? And then you start the illness. That means that you're contagious all the way out to 24 days, assuming that those last three were without fever. So the length of that incubation period is important. And it's possible that if you got tested back here on day four, that test would have been negative, because you didn't have enough virus yet to even turn the test positive, much less have symptoms. So even a negative test early in the quarantine period doesn't mean it's safe to go back to work. You still need to be under quarantine if it was a true exposure. So again, the folks who own restaurants and hotels ought to be listening, and I think we probably should go through this in a separate session. But sending someone in two, three, four days after they worked with somebody who tested positive, if they get a negative test, they're not out of the woods. They can't go back to work, because we have to wait through that entire 14 days. Or if they start having symptoms back here, like I said, then you start the clock for 10 days. And God forbid, they start having symptoms on that 14th day, because now you got to start the clock again for 10 days and hope that the fever breaks for those last three. This is why we want people to work with us, because it gets so complicated. And I would say that 90% of the cases, oh, here's all your negative tests till you finally get a positive test here. I'd say most of the cases I've seen so far have not been the people who are actively exposed to somebody. It's been family members who stay in the same household, and then, when that person finally gets their test results back here, decide now we're going to leave the house and quarantine. So now their clock starts the last time they were with the person that we know is positive. And so it could be a 28-day or 25-day incubation for a family member, just because they wanted to stay in the same house with somebody until they got their test results back. Now, if they gamble and the test results are negative, then they can stop at that point. But again, this is so complicated, and it's so complicated because of that initial asymptomatic period, that you need to work with us to figure out how to do this. And I give my patients a lot of different options. Say, "We can separate you from your husband, and we can start the clock now," or "We can gamble and predict that his test is going to be negative, and that way, then you don't even have to worry about it, because his negative test means that you weren't exposed." So that brings up probably the most important concept of the night, and that is what is an exposure? Because right now, everyone is so nervous that they're assuming that just being in the same room as somebody is an exposure. And so the concept is that it takes a certain number of virus particles to get you infected. Now, if somebody sneezes with a lot of snot right into your face, that's a high concentration, and it only took that one sneeze to do it. But if you're just talking to somebody, and especially if you're wearing a mask or if you're across the room, the concentration may be so low that you are never with the person long enough in order to get enough virus to get infected. So it's definitely more than just being in the same room as somebody, passing by them briefly. And all of the modeling was done without people wearing masks. We'll come back to what the masks do, because a lot of people have challenged them, and they've unfortunately been thrown into the political soup as well, with the mask-wearing being somehow a form of suppression or control by the government, when it's just a way that we try to keep boogers from passing to one person, from one person to another. Because the virus isn't traveling in tiny little particles like little flies, they are riding pieces of respiratory secretion, snot and moisture coming out of your nose and your throat. And so anything that can stop those big pieces of fluid and mucus is going to reduce the viral load and reduce the likelihood of getting infected. And that doesn't matter if it's a bandana, a surgical mask, but as you move towards higher and higher-quality masks, it blocks more and more of the particles or the secretions that would potentially have virus on them. Touching somebody that a COVID patient handled, that turns out to not be much of a thing. So watching the CNN doctor spray off his cornflakes with his family, with bleach, is something I've now saved. Then I'm going to show my grandchildren as how ridiculous this got, but it's not something we need to worry about. And wearing gloves isn't really going to do anything either. In fact, your skin is a great barrier for virus getting in your body, as long as you wash it every now and then, especially before you touch your eyes or your nose. So the best thing would not be to wear gloves, it would be to have hand sanitizer at your station, and every time you come into contact with somebody or periodically through the day, that you hand sanitize and keep the viral load on your hands at a minimum, and try not to touch your face and your nose, et cetera. The CDC defines an exposure as being within six feet of somebody for at least 15 minutes total time. And so as I trace through at these restaurants and hotels, there have been very few people that work so closely with another person that they fall into this category. And that's important, because that gives you the latitude of, instead of sending 30 people home and closing down, it says there may be three people that fell into this category. that we need to isolate now for 14 days or 10 days until after they have a positive test or 10 days until they start developing symptoms." But there's only a small number of people that need to be isolated because they actually had an exposure. And here's a few numbers for your next cocktail party, hopefully not anytime soon, because cocktail parties in bars seem to be a good way, since we don't wear masks, to spread it around. But some interesting tidbits here. People in the same household, husbands and wives, have less than 25% chance of transmitting it to each other, which is interesting because it seems like people sitting in a bar are having more intimate contact with each other and a higher rate of transmission than a husband and a wife. And teenage, teenagers in particular, seem to have very low risk because they don't seem to ever say anything to their parents or spend any amount of time with them. But it's striking to me how low the chance of transmission is. For me, I'm responsible for over 3,000 providers, half of those being helicopter flight nurses and paramedics and the other half being paramedics and EMTs in the Riverside Fire Department, who collectively have literally taken care of thousands of COVID patients, including doing intubations, giving them nebulized treatments, all the things that increase transmission and are supposed to force you to put on your maximum amount of personal protective equipment. And we have zero transmissions from patients to our staff. Now, we've had about a dozen people who have contracted COVID on their days off. So we're much more careful when we're taking care of patients than we are in our personal lives, unfortunately. But there has been zero transmission from patients. So if you use the proper precautions, you can keep yourself from getting this. And yet you see these ideas of super-spreaders at bars and nightclubs and other mass gatherings. And so it really is a matter of maintaining the proper sanitation and personal distance. So what I would suggest is that if you have to deal with, quote, outsiders, whether that's tourists or whether we're talking about going to visit people in areas that have a higher incidence of COVID, that you should wear a mask and sanitize your hands. And just like our paramedics and flight nurses and EMTs, you will not get it. That's particularly true if at your house, there are people who are more vulnerable, older people, people with comorbidities. And that's a common scenario on Catalina Island where there are multi-generations living in the same household. And so those of you who are on the front lines should behave the same way that we do as healthcare workers, wearing the mask, sanitizing the hands, coming back and trying to wash yourself off, change your clothes before you interface with anybody who's vulnerable in the household. With any symptoms or with a true exposure, you should get tested. And we'll test anybody. We'll test you even if you didn't have an exposure. We'll just explain to you how this works and make sure you understand that a negative test today doesn't mean that you can't catch coronavirus tomorrow. The antigen, again, that's the nasal swab, tells you that you have active virus coming out with the caveat that it may be dead virus after that 14 days or the 10 days of symptoms. And the antibody testing is maybe for the long-term immunity, but like I said, our test is performing really well here. And because we get the results back so quickly, you may get both if you have symptoms. And then for businesses where there is a identified individual, then truly trying to figure out who was exposed. And again, we understand that you want to be cautious and test everyone, but that's where I think we should have a separate session to explain that you're going to cripple yourselves financially if it continues to percolate through the community and you shut down every single time, that there are better ways to do it. And please be kind to each other. The few individuals who have been unfortunate to contract this have been treated like lepers and that's unfortunate because this could be contracted by any of us because of the asymptomatic spread. And that, for the most part, they have been trying to comply with the recommendations and do everything we ask. But the last thing they need is to be excluded and ostracized, even in some cases in an aggressive way. All right, when's this all going to end? Well, what's the status on the vaccine? So far, there are dozens of trials going on and we've got some big players in this game. Some of the big pharmaceutical companies like Pfizer are involved. And it looks like thus far, all the vaccines are safe. They have been able to generate antibodies. We don't know how long those antibodies will last. Those antibodies that they generate do seem to be able to bind to the virus and suppress disease in test tubes. So everything looks good and now they just have to prove that it works in a large population of people who are getting coronavirus at a rate of 2%, 3%, 4% at the most. So you need lots of people. And those trials have already started. And so our hope is that at least one of them will be a successful trial and that we will see vaccine available this fall. I am almost certain there will be a vaccine. Now, how it will be distributed is anyone's guess. One thing that we've seen for the first time ever is companies bet tens of millions of dollars on the vaccines being successful and starting to ramp up production so that there is vaccine available even before we know if it works. And that's a bet that they're going to make in order to try to have vaccine available prior to this flu season. Because if this coronavirus behaves like other coronaviruses, it likes the winter months better than the summer months, and we may see a spike this fall. If there's a limit as to how much is available, it will likely be distributed to healthcare workers and people who are vulnerable, including the elderly and people with other illnesses first, and then made available to everyone else. But again, the companies are going all in on this stuff. There may be more than one vaccine available and it may be that all of them are effective and we won't know for several years which is most effective, but that having something on board, even if it doesn't stop you from getting the virus, will make it a much less severe form of illness. And again, as I mentioned, the antibodies seem to fade faster than for other viruses. Mucils, the antibodies last your whole life. Coronavirus, I would be surprised if we didn't have to have a booster every year, at least until it disappears from the earth. Now, one of the drugs that I mentioned to you a couple of months ago is entering larger trials and the best sign that it looks promising is that Merck, rather than investing in a vaccine, is investing in this drug. And what makes it unique is that it seems to, A, be immune to the mutations thus far, knock on wood, and B, most importantly, it's available as a pill, not as an IV thing. So it would be like Tamiflu, but probably even better because it seems to work against all flavors of coronavirus. So it'll be very exciting and we wouldn't need as many patients to show that the virus levels drop and that the clinical symptoms decrease. And so I would bet that we will see this drug available on some basis as early as September. And if Merck's involved, they'll probably mass-produce it so that everyone who gets the virus will have access at some point within the next flu season. And maybe the virus will continue to mutate and weaken and follow the path of SARS-1 and it will disappear. And so with that, on that hopeful note, I will stop and you'll probably have to read me the questions or repeat things that people are calling in. But hopefully, that wasn't too dense and gave you some appreciation for what we're trying to do and why this is so complicated.
Yeah, once again, you know, you nailed it, Dr. Davis. Thank you. We'll go to questions, but we just can't thank you enough for all of this information. It's fantastic, from the local level all the way to what's happening, you know, in California. So thank you. And do we have questions? Michael?
Yes, I have one question from Kathleen Hill-Carwell. She writes, "Contact tracing is a critical tool in a community's effort to stop the spread of COVID-19. Contact tracing stops the chain of transmission through rapid isolation of positive cases. Many of us are concerned that this is not happening quickly enough and that the tests are taking way too long to get back. Contact tracing identifies and quarantines those in close contact with positive cases. There have been people out and about instead of quarantining after exposure or while waiting for test results. Can you do anything to improve or to implore these people to stay home? Additionally, employers play a vital role in contact tracing. With the responsibility to provide a safe workplace, employers have a vested interest in quickly notifying employees of a potential exposure to COVID-19 to keep employees healthy, maintain customer and employee confidence, and reduce the need to close facilities. In other parts of the country, alliances of the area's largest employers have created, quote, 'healthy workspace guidelines,' unquote. Can the city help our employers do the same so that everyone is on the same page when cases hit, especially since so many people work in multiple businesses? Below is a link to a document from Seattle Alliance of Businesses. The key steps employers can take to prepare their workplace to support contact tracing efforts are: 1. Be prepared to make a plan; 2. Establish a COVID-19 point of contact; 3. Strengthen channels to quickly identify COVID-19 cases; 4. Take swift action once a case has been identified; 2. A. Support the sick employee; B. Protect the health and safety of others in the workplace; and C. Partner with public health to reduce workplace and community transmission." Thank you, Kathleen.
Yeah, I'm not sure there was a true question in there, but it was a beautifully crafted statement that could probably be published somewhere and posted somewhere because clearly she did her homework and even had links. Now, my response to that, since there wasn't an exact question in there, is to say that from the standpoint of what we're trying to do, there are two things. One, that's going to, two things that are going to make what she's saying a reality. One is the acquisition of point-of-care antigen testing so that if somebody felt that they were exposed, they could immediately come to the hospital and get tested. Now, then the rate-limiting step is not that it takes seven days to get the results back. It's that it takes potentially up to 14 days for somebody who's exposed to grow enough virus in their nasal passages in order to turn the test positive. And I've been likening it to a pregnancy test. If you send someone in the day after they had intercourse for a pregnancy test, I can tell you it's going to be negative, but it doesn't mean that that individual, I guess you could say that female, is not pregnant. But that it takes a while to get to the point where you turn the test positive. And so if during that period of time, the behavior of the individual is such that they assume that they're positive until they get to that 14-day mark and they behave accordingly, then we're all okay. My fear is that people interpret that negative test as a sign that they don't have the virus and all it means is that they don't have enough of the virus to turn the test positive yet. And I think if we get the point-of-care test, we can come up with some kind of protocol that would allow us to test periodically so that as soon as we can identify an individual as being positive, we can start to do that case-contact testing. Now, the second thing that we're doing is trying to work with the public health department and convince them that even though we are a very small percentage of Los Angeles County and that every public health department in the country is running themselves ragged trying to do anything that resembles case-contact testing, that we deserve special consideration out here because we're a unique population. That definitely worked when it came to getting medications and equipment. It worked when it came to getting N95 masks. So far, it's getting mostly lip service, but I have to tell you that the public health departments were not prepared for a nationwide pandemic. All of the training that we did was for things like a bioterrorist event where something happened in a single area at a single moment in time and then we had to figure it out from there. But the idea that the entire nation is going to be affected simultaneously and to make it worse, public health officials in certain areas have had their lives threatened, have been vandalized, are being blamed for people's businesses going under. And so compared to what I see over here on the mainland, Catalina has been a model of get-alongedness. I'm sure there's a word that means that, but I just can't think of it at the moment. But I think everyone appreciates that there are different perspectives here and that if you're an 85-year-old retiree with diabetes and heart disease, your perspective on whether the tourists should come back is different than if you're a businessperson who's trying to feed a family of five on a salary that no longer exists. And everyone has been fairly mutually respectful and for the most part, are trying to get the best path forward for everyone. But if we can get that public health official stationed out on the island to do true case-contact testing where they're allowed to go in and get in people's business and let them know they've been exposed where the hospital cannot because of all the rules we have to follow, the best we can do is sort of like what's been happening where the businesses and individuals are trying their best to notify and let people know, "You might have been exposed. Please go get tested." But again, the problem with this is that period of asymptomatic spread and that that has thrown all the rules of epidemiology out the window. Because again, just because you tested negative three days after you last worked with someone doesn't mean that you don't have it. And that the best path forward is going to be to truly separate exposures from people who just happen to be in the area. Because we don't need to test everybody who worked in the same building as somebody. We need to test those who came into close contact. And if you're wearing your mask, that mitigates the risk substantially. So there, I answered a question that wasn't asked.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, and I received one more question. This one is from Paula Patterson. She writes, "What is your opinion of a point of view I've read that says that if for an extended amount of time, people comply with the three issues we are told diminishes the likelihood of transmission that includes wearing a mask, washing your hands, and social distancing, the virus abates because it cannot find a host and eventually dies off or at least diminishes? What is your viewpoint? Thank you so much for this relevant and informed information, Paula Patterson."
Yeah, I mean, that definitely works, but I think one of the interesting social phenomena that has emerged out of this is how much Americans value their freedom. And in this case, freedom doesn't mean the freedom to own a gun or the freedom to say or do whatever you want, but even the freedom to not wear a mask, that people get to the point of blows and certainly vehement insults when they're challenging the idea that someone else can tell them that they have to wear a mask. And it's a very sharp division between those who think that that's the right of a government and a society to take care of each other and impose that versus those who say that you can make the suggestions, you can offer the scientific perspective, but you can't tell us that we have to do it. And in fact, if you do, I'm more likely to flaunt it. And that leads to, you know, then a new phenomenon in the last 10 years of people trying to humiliate each other on social media and the term Karen to describe someone who throws a fit if they're being criticized for not wearing the mask. And it's so far outside of what we learned about public health in school that all the rules are being written, rewritten. And when you look at other countries, in most cases, there is a natural deference to authority to where people will follow what they perceive to be law or rules exactly as spelled out without challenging them. And that has led to a very rapid disappearance, for the most part, of the virus in society. Now, there's a lot of suspicion, maybe the most authoritarian governments that have the most control over the minds and the actions of their citizens are also hiding cases. And so I don't know if anybody completely knows the truth, but if you're truly interested in this, the most interesting case report has been Norway versus Sweden, which are two very similar societies as far as their genetic similarity and their general outlook on life. In fact, I have both sets of genes running in my own blood. And in one case, the government decided to impose a strict lockdown. They saw very low death rates, very low transmission, disappeared quickly, but they suffered economically and now only 1% or 2% of people have antibodies as opposed to in Sweden where they sort of let it run its course. They offered some guidelines and people often chose to wear masks. They offered some guidelines and people often chose to wear masks, but definitely not 100% and people were still eating in restaurants. They had higher death rates, although not as high as Italy or UK or the United States, but higher than in Norway. And about 25% of their citizens seem to have antibodies. And there's been a lot of debate because economically they didn't suffer as much, but they did have perhaps a higher death rate than they needed to have. And it's led to a lot of discussion about what the right role of government is and how you measure protection of the economy against protection of vulnerable individuals, potentially even including people at the end of their lives in nursing homes, and how far you are obligated to extend. And so I agree with the sentiment of the question, but I also recognize that in America, it is impossible to enforce the kind of social isolation and hygiene that it would take to see the virus peter out the way it has in other countries. And so as a realist, I recognize that we're not wired that way at this point in our history to be able to comply enough to see the virus disappear this way. And I think for us, it's going to take either a major mutation or the vaccine and/or therapy to see it disappear. I don't think we're going to be able to do it with public health measures.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Can I have Captain Hawke, you see if anybody on the outside has?
Sure. He says no. I have two questions, Dr. Davis. So if you were, well, you are a physician. So in terms of schools opening, do you have any medical opinion on how you think schools should be opening or should they be opening?
I personally agree with the idea that the children, for whatever reason, I think we haven't completely identified, are at very, very low risk of suffering any health consequences. And I think the only point of discussion becomes, are the children at risk for carrying it to their grandma and grandpa, who are then at risk of dying from the disease? And there are some interesting data that came out of New York City saying that not only are children not as likely to suffer a true illness, but they don't even get it for some reason, that even children of workers on the front lines in New York City and children of people who ended up contracting COVID didn't get it. And they certainly didn't spread it around to each other at their daycares because they had to maintain daycares there. And so there's a lot of debate within the public health community about whether we can take that lesson or that observation and apply it now to our schools, you know, out here where we haven't had nearly the impact of coronavirus as they had in New York but are still seeing active cases. Personally, I think it's, I would like to see kids return to school, but that is my own opinion. I think that we have to get into the habit of kind of sanitizing before we come through the door, and that's harder with younger children. But I think if you've got vulnerable people in your household, you have to treat it to some degree the way we, like I mentioned before, the way that we treat our own families coming back from a shift in the emergency room or the way that we've treated the nursing home to some degree. But I think that it's safe to go back to school. Now, at the same time, I see that there's going to be an irreversible shift towards alternate learning that includes things like homeschooling or, you know, learning online. And I think, you know, that will be true for medical education, that will be true for meetings, that will be true in all aspects of our lives, including school. So just like our own kids' school, they're offering different models that you can come back and be 100% in school, you can be 100% homeschool, or you can have some sort of blend. But from a health perspective, I'm okay with a return to school because I don't have any fear for the kids. But if I were in a household where the kids are in constant contact with vulnerable individuals, I would establish a routine to make sure that they are, quote, sanitized before they have contact with the vulnerable patients.
Okay, thank you. And what about, and I'm probably screwing this up, but minority populations being more decima, minority populations than Caucasians? Where do I hear that? And why do I hear that?
There's no question that the data support that non-white populations have been harder hit by the coronavirus. And I think the debate divides between this being something genetic because there are clearly genetic things about this. I mean, type A blood, for example, has a much, much higher likelihood of complications than the other blood types. And type O seems to be the best one to have. So there are likely going to be things identified which are true of a lot of different diseases that fall along, you know, ethnic and racial lines that are attributable to the genetics. That being said, and certainly with the political climate or the social-political climate of the last couple of months, I think there are some legitimate accusations that this also falls along access to health care and access to quality health care and biases that, you know, health care workers may hold without realizing it. So I think we're going to see a lot of investigation and a lot of interpretation over the next, you know, months to years that try and get to the bottom of why there's that difference. And whether it comes down to purely genetic, I would be surprised if that were the case. I am sure that there are access to health care issues. I am sure that this also has to do with the comorbidities that we know, things like obesity and diabetes, which we know are higher in non-white populations. And I think that we'll find things that have to do with how closely you live next to other people, whether it's within your household or whether it's, you know, the population density in the neighborhoods in which you live that are going to be relevant too. So I'm guessing it's going to be multifactorial, but that reflects my own background in genetics, public health, and social psychology. So I'm bringing all of my background into play here and guessing that all of them are going to play a role.
Great, thank you. Counsel, questions? No?
Thank you so much.
I do, I do. Oh, yes, sorry. For an employer, will you suggest if their employee was exposed to just isolate for the two weeks and then get the test or take the test right away and then another after the two weeks?
I think because of the practical aspect of the lag, that what we're finding out is that you're exposed to somebody a week ago who just got their positive test today and that to try and identify the people in your life over the last week with whom you've had true exposure, not just in the same room, but you've spent time, you know, in close quarters, more than 15 minutes, less than six feet, I think because we're trying to identify all of those people going backwards, that it makes sense to have a test when you find out that you've been exposed and that the question is, you know, more, do you need than a second and a third test through that 14 days? Or is it practical to just quarantine if you had a true exposure, but for the sake of all the people around you, find out if at that moment in time, you test positive? And the reason I say that is because I think that we will find in the early data support that if you have a negative swab, you probably aren't contagious at that moment. Doesn't mean you won't be tomorrow or the next day. But at least if you told me that last week, I worked elbow-to-elbow with somebody in a restaurant who now got his positive COVID test today and you swabbed me and I were negative today, I would bet that all the people I had close contact with over the last week don't have to worry about me because if I'm negative today, I probably wasn't transmissible. But the frustration is that we then don't know for a whole week whether all those people I came into contact with last week have to worry. And so it will greatly accelerate the process when we have a point-of-care test, but it will still make sense to get tested sooner than later so that you know what to tell all the people in the last week that you've come into contact or at least since you last were exposed to that individual. So for me, getting tested now or as soon as you find out makes sense so that you can notify the people over the, you know, from the last time you saw the person who tested positive until today, you can notify all those people that you came into contact with that you might have exposed them as well.
Did that answer your question?
Kind, I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, they're negative and then they're quarantined for the two weeks and then on the 15th day, they do develop enough to have the virus, but don't get tested.
Yeah, no, you're asking the question that every time I put the lecture together, it bugs me. So what if you became an asymptomatic carrier on day 13, but you got tested on day 7? So could you have exposed people in between as an asymptomatic carrier? That's sort of, you know, the sort of the way it works. Because once you find out you're a true exposure, technically you should quarantine and that includes from your own family. And that's why I say it's important to understand that exposure is not just being in the same room, but it's being close with somebody for an extended period of time. And if you were wearing a mask or if they were wearing or both, then, you know, it may be impossible, but, you know, we don't want to take the idea of an exposure lightly. But if you were truly exposed, you should be quarantined for 14 days following that exposure or if you test positive or develop symptoms from 10 days from that point forward. So I think, you know, a true exposure means you should be quarantined and it doesn't really matter what the tests say because you could turn positive all the way out to that 14th day. So that's why I say for me, getting a test before then, because it's not going to change what you can do, it makes sense to me because that way you can tell all the people from your recent past whether they should be worried. So it is part of that case-contact testing to be able to go back, even if it's just a couple of days, and tell people, "Hey, I didn't realize I was exposed to somebody." But you should, you know, now, you know, depending on the nature of the exposure, you may need to then go into quarantine. And then, but if they get their test result back and they were negative today, then that means they probably were not contagious for the preceding days. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It'd be easier to draw with a pen, but it's really looking backwards, not forwards. That is the rationale for why I think you should get tested so you know who to inform that they were exposed.
Okay, thank you.
And just one other question. Would your advice to be to people that are exposed that, or that have contracted it, to be very upfront and open about that instead of being maybe ashamed or something like that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, there are a few people where I can't all admit, I'll look down my nose if you went to a COVID party and had a pool going to see who could catch it fastest. I would probably look down on you if that were the case. But for the most part, you know, these are people who are trying to live their lives and they are trying to avoid catching it even if they know that they're not likely to have a lot of complications, but they have people in their lives who they don't want to get sick. And so it's not their fault, it's the fact that this virus can be transmitted when people don't have symptoms. And, you know, you could live your life in a bubble and you could, you know, isolate and a lot of people have. And they, you know, I think resent the fact that there are other people out there living their lives and doing things that maybe are a little bit more reckless. And so I don't, you know, I hope that that's, we could, when we get into these discussions in our households, you know, we quickly extend it out into, you know, if you're going to look down on people for going to a barbecue on the Fourth of July and potentially contracting it, then you should be looking down on the people who eat at McDonald's and not to pick on just on McDonald's, but even In-N-Out, which is sacred to me, and that are drinking sugar drinks and are smoking and are not exercising at least three days a week for their, I mean, there are so many other things that affect public health that you can look down on people on that why draw the line with coronavirus? And so I would hope that we don't get into this sort of shaming and blaming kind of culture the way that we have. It's unfortunate because, you know, again, much of the disease that we see is based on, you know, personal choices. And particularly with the elderly, what is just now starting to percolate out is how much depression and how much suicide and how much drug use there has been, not just amongst the elderly, but amongst everyone, over the anxiety surrounding coronavirus. And that's where we, in the medical community and in the press and in politics and in public health, have failed society miserably because we have whipped up so much fear to try to get people to comply with the guidelines that we've created other diseases that in Southern California, at least until, you know, and I think it probably still holds true, but the last time I checked was in May, we had more deaths from people who refused to go to the hospital because they were afraid of catching coronavirus and decided to sit at home having their heart attack or stroke, or people who took an overdose, or, you know, old people whose last, you know, weeks and months on this earth were spent in this bubble where nobody would come in and talk to them. You know, I don't think that we've handled this the right way. And in many cases, it's because we've tried to be overly cautious in the name of trying to limit spread, not realizing that we were going to have damage in other areas, whether it's mental or true health care damages. And our corners have full body trays, not to get too graphic, of people who shouldn't have died because they were terrified because they watched CNN and they watched Dr. Gupta wash his Cheerios with bleach and they're afraid to leave the house when, you know, we've blown it way out of proportion. And we've justified it by saying we've got to get people to wear their masks by scaring them, and we literally scared them to death. And so not everything is as easy to interpret as it seems on the surface. And so for people who are out there doing stuff, who are opening their businesses, who are visiting their grandma and grandpa, you know, it may be that they've got it more right than we realize and hopefully we don't pass judgment until we have all the answers and even then have some empathy for each other because everyone's doing the best they can. And it doesn't do any good to shame people into making other bad decisions or just feeling overall miserable. All right, I'm off my soapbox.
Thank you, that was very, very good. If there's no further questions, thank you, Dr. Davis, and we look forward to hearing about that vaccine.
That's right. Hopefully the next visit will be with good news.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Now, we are going to go to...
Department heads.
Yes.
Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Got four items bringing forward. We increased public work staffing. Today, the CM approved a ramp up of staffing levels back to 60%, minimum for public works' field crews, that's good news. Increased revenue as reopening progresses allows us to happen. This will be in place through Labor Day. At that time, we'll again evaluate staffing levels as visitors, high visitor season goes down. Increased staffing will allow a higher level of service for essential cleaning and maintenance tasks. Second item is Pebble Beach Road rock fall cleaning and K-Rail fencing replacement. So one of the projects that increased staffing will provide is the interim cleaning and fence panel repair on Pebble Beach Road. As you remember, we were going to do an extensive cleaning, but cash flow has limited us to not be able to get that done. So what we'll do is, we've got all our defense panels on hand, we've got the equipment, we have our own crews, we'll go out there, any of that rock that's bulging out, we'll focus on that, pull up the panels, clean that out, and then get some new panels. So it's back to being safe and also aesthetically pleasing. This work will commence within the next few weeks and will be completed over several days and will be done in the morning. The rug will not be closed when we're doing this, okay? Phase two of the Mole Project. So we got the preliminary design and... Um, Phase Two of the Mole project, so we got the preliminary design and engineering is progressing on that. Remember, that's a federally funded project, uh, through the FTA. Um, this phase of the project will be where the buildings will be replaced, and we'll be doing some major work out there. Um, public input is scheduled within, uh, the next 45 days, so we'll be, uh, we've already presented some of the basic concepts and layouts to the department head as a start, uh, getting the input from the leadership team, and then we'll move that into discussing with council and to the public. Uh, Five Corners project, uh, utility plans for the Five Corner project are nearing completion. This will modify all the underground facilities, so, including the storm drain, um, and all of the overhead utilities within the intersection that are in the way. Um, today I met with AT&amp;T and Catalina Broadband, and we've already had meetings with SCE for modifications. That will, uh, complete that set of plans once we get finalized the input from them, and then, uh, the first phase of the construction will, um, then be put out to bid, and we anticipate that to commence in the fall of this year. And then after we get that done, it would be another season before we do the roadway project portion of that, because it's going to be a two-season construction, because it's a pretty large undergrounding project, getting everything ready, can't be all done in one season, and since that's such a major intersection, we can't have that under construction when the visitors are on, on the island, so. Um, but as we do that first phase, other pieces that we can put back in place, so that we're not so, have such raw edges, will be completed, so you'll see it kind of a slow construction, but, um, it will be a neat and orderly, um, progress as we do it. Any questions?
No, great.
Okay, thank you.
That was good, JK.
Good evening, council. I hope we all had a great Fourth of July weekend. A lot of people in town, a lot of boats. Um, we, uh, we did a kind of a, a check on, uh, our boats this year. We had, uh, from Thursday till Monday morning, 396 boats. Uh, that equates to about 1,400, um, total nights. Last year at this time, which was surprising, we had 286. So there's quite a few boats this year compared to last year, but I think last year we had some weather issues, and that, um, Fourth of July, July was on a Thursday last year then, on a Saturday. So we went back and looked at when the last time the Fourth of July was on a, a Saturday, and that was back in 2015, and we had 388 boats back then. So we had a good, good weekend, a lot of boats, um, a lot of side ties, minimal issues. I'm sure you all saw out there that we had the South Swell going, uh, that created all that havoc in Newport. Luckily, it, our dinghy docks and everything, um, survived, we replaced all of our lines throughout the, uh, the winter, and so, we were prepared for it. One other good news, and, um, is that officially, the pier hoist is in operation. And I want to apologize to Michael, he, he...
He did not get the first fish.
He had, he had a fish on for three hours, and I was hoping to be able to bring it in, but he, he didn't bring it in, but, um, uh, it, I, I just, I want to shout out, and I hope everybody else has an opportunity, that anytime they see a tuna club member, is to say thank you, because if it wasn't for them, this project was dead in the water. They donated the money to complete the project, and my hat's off to Chase Offield, Bill Larkin, uh, I mean, I can name them all, but it's, I can't remember them all. So, uh, thank you to them, shout out to them, um, and so, we're, we're back and, we're back and ready to go on the pier. All we got to do is figure out how, because Caleb's not open, who's going to be operating it, so, uh, that's something that we'll work on.
At this point, I think I should offer up a little assistance there, too. But thank you, a heartfelt thanks from me personally, that this was my pet project for the last couple of years.
It has been, yeah.
Um, a thank you to the tuna club personally as well, and to all the members who donated into the foundation, and of course, Chase Offield directly as well, so, thank you.
Well, you are the driving force behind this.
Yes.
There is no doubt in anybody's mind about that one, so, I'm glad it's up, I'm glad that's one project. Before I end up, um, retiring out, I'm glad I got that one done, so.
Great.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking. Uh, Fourth of July weekend overall went very well. Uh, obviously, we saw a lot of visitors to the island. Deputies warned people about putting on masks, make sure they had them. A large amount of the people already had them on, and we didn't have any problems. Every time we told somebody to put their mask on, they would have it down, they would put it up right away, and it wasn't a big problem for us. Uh, over the last week, we got a couple noteworthy arrests. Deputies were called, uh, to Descanso Beach regarding a drunk driver. She passed out in the car, and she had two three-year-olds in the car, and that wasn't a very good idea at all. Uh, she was arrested for, uh, child endangerment, and the children were, uh, safe, didn't have any injuries. Give credit to Harbor Patrol Officer on, uh, I believe it was the Fourth of July, it could have been, I think it was in the evening on the Fourth. He saw somebody go and steal a cellphone from a person on the beach. He called us, followed him, we were able to take the suspect into custody for stealing the cellphone, but the cellphone was already gone. The deputies were able to identify the cellphone by calling it, and it rang in the second suspect's pocket, after they denied having the cellphone. So that person was also arrested, so we had two arrests on that. And the last arrest, uh, on Fourth of July, was a, uh, domestic violence call that we responded to. There wasn't actually domestic violence on the call, it was an argument only, but the person had a $110,000 warrant for a previous domestic violence and assault with a deadly weapon. So they were taken into custody. Because of the zero bail, all of them were released right after they got their suspension.
Right, okay.
Uh, we also worked with the fire department on Fourth of July. I had deputies strategically placed around the city. I had one of the firemen, uh, in a location where they could observe illegal fireworks, and we received five calls of illegal fireworks, and none of them were the type that go up in the air, they were more of a M-80-type explosion firework. And that's all I have.
Any questions, as a captain? No, thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. Uh, we also saw the, with the increase in crowds, the increase in call volume. Uh, we didn't have any major incidents, and it looked for our call volume more like a typical summer day. I want to thank Captain Hawking and his crew for, it was very helpful to have a coordinated effort on illegal fireworks, and we're very thankful we didn't see anything like the mainland experienced. Uh, we had a couple of, um, very, very minor issues that were quickly addressed with the outdoor dining on Friday, and everyone worked really well together to get that rectified, and no problems, I know we're going to discuss it a little later. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You must be up next, you're really cleaning. Are you going to talk at all, uh, Mr. Hunky?
That's for the captain, please.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Could I also just, uh, for Captain Hawking's report, just give a shout out to the reserve deputies who came over for the weekend and helped us out in town? Thank you very much for that assistance.
Uh, Matt Baker, finance director. I actually just came out to set up the slide, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, oh, thank you.
If I can, just a, um, a couple shout outs for July 4th, I want some thank yous here. Um, first, at 10 o'clock, we had a decorating award committee. Uh, they went via golf cart, uh, three individual golf carts, uh, did the, um, awards for business decorating, home decorating, uh, and we had a golf cart decorating contest on the Fourth, and that was for best use of red, white, blue, uh, best overall, and most original. Um, first, second, and third ribbons went to all, we had gift, uh, gift certificates, local gift certificates for the winners of each of those. Uh, and that goes out to our mayor, uh, Mayor Annie, Cheryl Philippe, and then Teresa Edwards, where the, maybe I should put that out publicly, right? In case you didn't...
I got paid before the judging, so, that's okay.
Um, a couple others, Jenny Eisenhut, uh, she played, uh, Chimes, she doesn't play chimes, she rings chimes, I had this lecture one time. Uh, Rings of Chimes, uh, we did that at 12 o'clock, and then the Johnson family for the patriotic music at 9 o'clock, and I hope you like that. Uh, we started a couple programs this week, our day camp program, um, we've limited to 16 kids, two pods of eight, um, so small groups, um, uh, we filled that up, and that's from 9 to 3, uh, we had that over the course of the summer. Uh, we started today our junior lifeguard program with 24, was our capacity, three groups of eight, uh, we had that at capacity. And then this morning, we had a couple kids that did both, uh, they ran from 7:00, 8:15 in the running club, and were down at the beach at 8:30 for, uh, junior lifeguards. And then just a real quick update on food pantry, it's been a couple weeks since I've talked about. Uh, we, at one point, probably four weeks ago, six weeks ago, we were seeing 190, 199 is where we peaked. Uh, a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago, uh, we, we saw it drop off to about 163, I think the number was. Uh, two weeks ago, 109, uh, last week was 111, so we're starting to see those numbers come down, and we hope to see those continue to come down.
Great, thank you.
That was it.
Any questions?
Do you, are you still in need of resources for the food pantry, or are you, do you have enough to carry on for a bit longer?
We are still, um, you know, shout outs to Tuna Club, as ever done, Yacht Club, Catalina Island Foundation, um, but we're still about 12 weeks out in funding, um, you know, we peaked at about 6,000 to 7,000 a week now, uh, this past week's order was, today's order was 3,200, um, so with that, we've got about 12 weeks, um, I hope to see it.
Fantastic.
Yeah, but we certainly would put a, a word out if we get to that point again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, council? We're good. Okay, do we have a city manager report?
Just a couple things to, um, to address with the council, and this evening, we were supposed to have two, uh, items on the agenda, and I just wanted to let you know when they will be on. One of them was the interfund loan, and that will be for the first meeting in August now, that's when we'll be ready for it. Uh, Mole Phase One was supposed to come back to you a month after we had it at the first meeting in June, and it will be at the next meeting, and that's for you to look at alternate number two, and how we should proceed forward.
All right.
Um, I just want to reassure the council and the public that we have been fielding all these complaints regarding, uh, the trash pickup, residential and commercial trash pickup, that staff has, uh, been working very hard on rectifying that problem, and we're not giving up until we can solve it.
Great.
And, uh, the DMV contacted me again, and they're still looking at August 24 and 27, and I'm still waiting for the contract from them. Uh, and I, last week, we were contacted by LA County Public Health, uh, I had mentioned at the last meeting that we were hopeful that we would have a, a contact tracer for us, as Dr. Davis said, it's been frustrating on their end, and they definitely said, no, that that was not going to happen, but it sounds like the hospital's going to be vigilant to, uh, keep working on that. And then, um, I just wanted to comment on all the mask signs that were implemented in a very fast manner. Uh, Dan Hunky was tasked with that, he did a tremendous job, Public Works getting it all out, and the hospital, it was a very collaborative, uh, effort, so, I, I thought there was, uh, a good amount of signs, and they were all positive, but yet, very, these are the areas that you have to wear your mask, and...
Great, yeah.
And, uh, Captain Hawking did, they did not give any citations, but he was armed with the admin citation to issue out if he had to.
Okay.
Him and his deputies.
Great, that's excellent.
Denise, do we have an update on the street sweeper? Is it back in operation?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
That's kind of same thing, I don't think they were working today.
The what, I'm sorry?
I don't think they were doing it today.
We will ask for a report of how many days it's been running, um, and then we will pay accordingly.
And that is a service, uh, that we have called out in the, uh, formal complaint that we're putting together for CRNR. Right now, BBNK has that, and they're just making some tweets before that gets us sent out.
Because that is money that's on our tax bill, correct? That is collected through our taxes?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Uh, is there, Elizabeth, do you have anything back there?
I do not have a report this week.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember report.
Lisa? Yeah, so, um, I, do you want to say, actually, thank you to the majority of residents and visitors, went out several times throughout the weekend, and probably saw at least 95% of people wearing masks when I was downtown. Um, beaches were slightly crowded at one point, but otherwise, social distancing was in place for the majority of the days that I saw, and people were well dispersed, um, which is good to see. Um, I am thankful I saw Captain Hawking at one point over the weekend, so thank you again to your crew and your team for what you were doing, and making sure everyone was kind of playing by the rules, and just to the business owners and everyone working in businesses. Um, I had discussions with a lot of different people about just what they were having to do and talk to, and for the most part, most people were compliant with what they needed to do. So I'm just hoping that, that, um, spirit of keeping everybody safe, both residents and visitors, continues. Um, I did want to just point out, this is a really good time to check your voter registration. If you are wanting to vote by mail for the upcoming election in November, to go to lavote.net, um, and you can change your registration to a vote by mail or permanent vote by mail if you'd like to. Um, and that site, um, lavote.net is available to you now to go and do that, you would just do a new registration as a vote by mail, uh, registration. You can also call in for services if you need to. That phone number, if you need it, is 1-800-815-2666. Again, that's 800-815-2666. And it's also a good time just to check to make sure your address matches your registration for convenience. Um, I know that they are super helpful with the new voting machines, and that some of that will be a lot easier to do also in place, but in case people are wanting to still social distance come November if we need to, um, that option is available for you to set up now. Um, I just wanted to talk, and maybe add this detail, and for the trash service discussion, um, had not heard back, still a response from CRNR, and we had sent an email in last week, I believe it was already, um, but had heard from some of their team that they normally have on large item pickups, which have resumed three people, and this previous week, I had some items picked up, and there was only literally one person working that, and those items can be anything from mattresses to large bulky items, and that, I think, is just completely unsafe, so if that can also be addressed in that discussion. Um, that they had, the, the count that I've heard regarding staffing is that they're down from 13 regular staff to five. Um, I don't know why that is again, but I know that that's being addressed. Um, I do want to thank Joanne, um, for getting back to everybody that had left messages regarding large items, she was on the mainland for a couple of weeks. I think if that had maybe been relayed ahead of time, that would have been helpful, but understanding that she had that time and needed to be over there for, uh, personal reasons. Um, and then, just wanted to float the idea of, um, seeing if next meeting we can add to the agenda a discussion about a volunteer corps for the city. Um, I went looking for information on the archives for, um, outdoor dining, wanting to see why the discussion had stalled last time, and what the reasons were that it wasn't working, and try to pull that information together to address those concerns and be able to move past it. And, um, it's not available because it was an older meeting past the five-year mark that's currently online. Um, I don't mind going through and helping with archiving stuff, and being able to move stuff into a different format, but I know there are a lot of people in town who may actually still have some time or be working only part-time right now, and be willing to help out with some of those projects like that, and also knowing that the recreation department has a volunteer section on their site, and maybe being able to start having some of that stuff listed and have people... maybe being able to start having some of that stuff listed and have people be regular volunteers and know what's coming. And same thing with Catalina Cares and listening at there. Having something that's kind of a common thing where people are communicated to about what the volunteer options are in town may actually increase the level of volunteerism, which we already know is very high. But just wanting to know also with that discussion, if there needs to be any training of what, you know, the public, the meetings are public, so that's fine, but if we're also going to be getting into being able to tag what happens in those discussions, so that you can then go search a topic and find it from every meeting back to whatever it is that we get to, to be able to know what the historical concept of whatever it is that we're talking about is, everything we talk about is something, for the most part, that we've talked about before. So having that historical knowledge, I think, would help. So hoping that we can perhaps look at doing that. And in the same vein, having that volunteer corps potentially also address having some translation services. I know the question had come up about having assistance for someone who may not be comfortable speaking in English as their first, as their second language, having someone available onsite to be able to translate, having a service to translate. And I think that that might be a role that a volunteer could fill, until we can find the funding to be able to make it a regularly paid and appointed position. So if you are all down for that, that would be awesome to discuss next time for some specifics and guidelines, if we can find some.
Do you think it might be appropriate for the, like, when you have your department head meetings, maybe run that up their flagpole to see if they think that would be helpful, and in what ways maybe they think volunteers could be used for starters? Does that make sense, Lisa?
Yeah, that's great.
Instead of maybe just bringing it right back to us to...
Sure. Yeah, no, I'm sure it'll be a discussion over time. It doesn't need to be next meeting, but just to get the conversation started and, and try to pull that together would be awesome.
Cool.
Thank you.
Volunteerism is a great thing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Oh, just a little update too, Lisa was saying, all LA County registered voters will get vote by mail.
Right. So, I'm sorry?
All LA County, everybody will get them.
Oh.
Who's already registered.
Oh, okay. Michael?
I really don't have anything, other than if you have not done the census, please do the census, very important. It allows us to get the funding that we need. So please, if you have not done the census, please fill out the census. And I'm in total agreement, we should have been doing this a long time ago, that we need to have interpretation in Spanish to our Spanish-speaking communities at all city council meetings. And also, I wouldn't, I would like to say that also happened for planning commission.
I know we've, we've kind of considered that before, and I think it, for a large part, it was a cost, cost thing, but however we can look forward to doing that. I, I've been relying on you, Yessenya, to get stuff out, you know, to them, and I know Alejandro could get some things out, but, and please keep that going. I really, that's really good until we can...
I think it's encouraging a lot of our community to get more engaged now, and I think that'll be a great addition for them to start feeling comfortable voicing their voice more.
Sure, yeah.
Than they already are.
Nothing else, Michael? Yessenya?
Okay. A shout out to everybody for 4th of July. It was one of the most relaxed 4th Julys I've ever been able to have. We all know the parade's my favorite thing to do in the whole year in this town, but it was also really nice to have a more quiet 4th of July. I unfortunately couldn't hear the music from up on the hill, but wish that I would have, but I heard it was fantastic. But that being said, thank you to Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, Reserves, everybody who was here for the weekend, great weekend in general. And then, you know, I am remiss in giving a shout out to a member of our community who very much deserves it, and we've had a lot, we've been doing a lot of trash talking up here about the trash not getting picked up, and, you know, some issues there. But I want to give a shout out personally to Eddie Vega and his family and team. They have been out there doing their part for, for the, how the contract has been set for them through COVID and whatnot. I am much more visible now, day to day, moment to moment, and I, I just really want us to thank him and his team for all the hard work that they have done. So when we're talking about some concerns with trash, I got to say, it, it has no reflection on Mr. Vega and his team.
Right.
So thank you very much.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Okay. I was at a phone call yesterday with Mayor Garcetti and a bunch of them, mayors and council members and staffers. I don't know if any of you two were on the phone call yesterday? Well, good, then you didn't hear me. But a couple things that brought, that Mayor Garcetti was talking about was, that in some cities, you can deputize volunteers to use the phone to contact people that are not in noncompliance, something like that, for, with a few trusted volunteers, might be good to kind of minimize your having to go door to door when you get a call, you know, when you get a call? Just a thought, Captain. I thought that was pretty informative. And a number of the cities now are looking into the fines, because enough is enough. And some of them are $250 and whatever, so I think by us having our, and I talked about our administrative citation at $100, I think we're being more than fair if we have to use that. So that's all I have. Okay, now we're into oral communications. This is an opportunity for people to address an item that is not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. I'm thinking that's constant. Yes, hello? Ooh, that is a nice mask.
Just going to use my... Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I haven't asked to be here from other people. I have three people who could not attend, they would like to allocate their minutes to me, if that is possible. Since I am the only one here to speak, I would ask that that be honored.
If they do, let the board supervise it, because they do not allow it. It's up to the mayor and the board.
I don't know, council, what do you, how long do you think you have to talk? How long do you...
Four minutes, maybe.
Counsel?
I'm okay with that.
Me too.
Okay, thank you. Now that that's out of the way. Two comments I was asked to relay before I begin. Patrick Alexander and Amber, I think you guys are doing a great job, and everyone take a moment to spread the love that was asked to be told to you guys. Also, I had one question. It was the eviction memorandum that was extended through September by our governor, does that apply to Avalon also?
Could you lift the microphone a little bit closer?
I'm sorry. The eviction memorandum that was extended through September by our governor, does that also apply to Avalon?
Ours even goes further, it goes through the end of our emergency...
I think ours goes through, so ours goes through further.
Yeah, ours, ours expired when we moved into, to Phase 3, and then it extended six months after that date. So we moved into Phase 3 on June 11th, and those protections were extended until December 11th.
Thank you. So I hope that person is listening and got that. So, sir. Hello, council. I would like to thank you for your service during this difficult time. Also, thank you for letting us hold our pride parade. There is nothing easy about the choices you're making. This is not business as usual. I was asked to be here today on behalf of individuals, mostly minorities, who cannot be here, to point out how some things are coming across in the community that you may not be aware of. From a personal standpoint, I am tired of all the ugliness in our town right now, all the finger pointing, and much of it is coming from a lack of clarity or communication. We had a city council meeting before this weekend, which you guys worked so hard on, to decide how we would enforce the state mandates over the 4th of July weekend. But when the weekend came up, it kind of felt like it wasn't followed through on. As a parent, as a scout troop leader who's involved with other youth organizations in town, and as an educator in town, I'm in a very hard place. When it was stated the beaches would be closed, for example, I told my children we'd wait until Monday to go to the beach. Then, when driving by the beach, the beaches were full. My children asked me if I had lied to them, because the beaches are full. I said, "No, they're closed. I'm sorry that they are breaking the rules." How do I teach my children the importance of following the societal contracts that we've decided on in a functioning society, having rules and procedures, when the society we are raising them in is not inclined to follow through with the decided rules? What is that teaching them? That following our decided rules means nothing? When school reopens in the fall, how can we expect, be expected as parents and staff to follow through if society isn't behind us and behind the rules that need to be enforced? Our students, staff, and parents need leadership who are behind them and willing to help enforce, and our local community to show support for our students is very important. Let's see. This weekend with dining on the beach was innovative, it was beautiful, it was incredible, and I'm so happy that this was allowed. However, even this started in controversy, and this could have been avoided with communication from the city. Things are changing rapidly, and things will happen. However, with open lines of communication clearly stated, it'll lessen the feelings of tension that's, that's just boiling among people in the community right now. Our elected leaders are doing their best, but we keep hearing for our workers to not socialize, to, to go to work and go home, to not go to the mainland unless necessary. Yet, we continue to invite people here, which is wonderful. We're a tourist-driven economy, and I understand the importance of the visitor. But we can't have it both ways. We can't tell our population not to go on vacation, not to visit with others, or shame them when they are openly asking people to come here and come visit. It's creating anger and a class divide, at best confusion, at the worst, it's, it's almost classism. People who are serving the community are not servants. What it is saying, what is it saying to the youth of our community when they're missing their summer vacations, being told they can't, can't do this, can't do that, but everyday people are here on vacation and fingers are being pointed? The Hispanic community, many of them that have contacted me feel that the fingers are being pointed specifically at them, and that's not acceptable. I want to take and point out at this point that I'm not, and thank and not point the blame at the police. In order for us to function as a unit, we need to have clear direction, and in this climate, I would not want their job at all. So kudos for that. We are telling people with pre-existing conditions to stay home. This is a CDC guideline, understandable. However, we are not telling the people that say they cannot breathe in a mask to stay home. If they are unable to be safe and keep others safe due to a condition causing them to not breathe, shouldn't they also be told to stay home? As a community, shouldn't we try to make it safe for all of our citizens to go out and enjoy, instead of openly discriminating against those with disabilities and telling them to stay home when we're not asking everyone to comply and make sure it's safe for them as well? If we decide on the rules and follow through enforcing them, all parts of our society would be able to participate in a sense of normal. And this would help ease tensions and frustrations, instead of purposefully segregating community members. We need to decide on our safety members without fear of being looked down upon and, for a class, for race, for disability, for saying, "No, we're going to follow through on this, and that's too bad for you. We're, we decided on these rules, and that's what we need to follow." We can do better as a community. We are failing each other. And I have had a friend, a six, with her six-year-old, who is a minority, be sprayed in the face with a water bottle for, for not wearing a mask in her own golf cart. Fear should not be causing this kind of cruelty in town. I've had family members sent home from work for traveling, told to quarantine, yet there are employees coming over from the mainland who are not quarantined, they're not sent home. We have people traveling to and from Mexico, told to quarantine, but we do not ask our visitors where they have been, or if they have been exposed. But we choose others to quarantine out of abundance of caution. It's not the fact that we don't single out our visitors and ask them, but it's the fact that we do single out others and ask them, that's the concern. We're sending mixed messages and causing friction in the community. It's, we can do better to bring everyone together and be more decisive. We can be better towards each other, and I just ask the council and everyone that we just take a look at the messages we're sending to each other. There's no room for pettiness or shaming in our lives here. We're all family. We're island strong, and we need to show it to all the members of our community, and let's just be more kind and respectful to everybody in our entire population. Everyone's doing their best, and our officials are doing their best, and we just really need to show more unity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Counsel. Is there anybody else for oral communication?
Any ecomments, Michael?
I have three comments. One of them is in regards to consent item number two, so if you wish, I can hold off and read that at the appropriate time. One question I have comes from Paula Patterson. She writes, "Question for JJ. Safety of our harbor patrol is of tantamount of importance, but I would like to know if the boats are being tablated. Also, do boats that use moorings owned by private parties that are not owners pay mooring fees?"
Denise, can you answer?
I'm sorry, I was concentrating on the second, the...
I know, I'm sorry.
The harbor department is not tabbing right now. We have not had any issues. We have stopped that because of COVID right now, and so once we get past that, we can start die tabbing again. Our readings still have been good with the county, so, no.
And the second one was...
I'm sorry, what was the second?
The second one says, "Also, do boats that use moorings owned by private parties that are not owners pay mooring fees?"
Yes.
Yes. They, they pay property tax, they pay maintenance on the, for the mooring itself. We do not pay a nightly, not we, mooring owners do not pay a nightly rate.
But they were saying, but if somebody sits on somebody's mooring, then they do pay?
As well as they bought that mooring, and it can cost from $85,000 to $300,000 or more.
No, Denise, the question is, if you own a mooring, and you allow me to use your mooring, I'm not the owner, but I'm on your mooring, I would in fact pay nightly mooring fees.
As well as a person that's side ties. I apologize, I didn't understand the question.
It's okay.
If I'm sitting on my mooring, and you come in side tie, you're going to pay a fee.
Yes.
And then the second question that I have comes from Paula Patterson as well. She writes, "Please quell this rumor. I was told by friends that they questioned guest officers regarding an issue about whether a certain behavior was permitted, beach access. That wasn't, that it wasn't relevant, as they were not allowed to sight anyway."
So who should be even answering that if, if it's answerable? Who is that directed to?
It doesn't have any direction to. I would guess I would look to Sheriff Hawking. It is sightable, not to speak for law enforcement, but anything that was part of a public health order, a health officer order, is enforceable by sight or punishable by a misdemeanor.
Yeah.
Ditto.
Ditto, okay, perfect. Okay.
Can I add a layer of discussion to that point? And I don't know, Denise, if there was anything that you had found or not. The question of the council's discussion of the beach areas above the wall being a park space. I was under the impression, and I think this is the case, but have not found my notes yet on it, so I'm still looking for them, but went through the local coastal plan and general plan, and park spaces are defined as open spaces using natural resources. And I believe several years ago, there was a number of projects that came up, including potential to improve Front Street and the beaches up to the mean high tide line. And for that reason, those spaces were designated as parks. I think people thought that the idea of them being called parks was pulled out of somewhere and/or not explained well. And they actually are, I believe, and I'm still double checking this, so I will get back to you guys next council meeting with the info, if I find it, and if anyone else does, please feel free. But I believe they actually were designated as parks for that purpose and have been since then. So to people's complaints and concerns and, and things of that nature, I think the designation of that is true. Whether or not we met the reasoning for wanting to have people off of beaches is another question. But I also think that we don't have the same situation as beaches on the mainland do, where the overcrowding would have been significant and impossible to control versus here, where for the most part, it was socially distanced and controlled because of how it was. So just something to add into that layer of discussion and question.
Great, thank you. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Great, okay, we're going to go to the consent calendar.
We have four items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is actions from the regular meeting of June 6th, and then the special meeting of June 30th. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $2,282,231.46. There are a lot of contracts in the warrants, as you saw.
That was interesting, that was kind of like the old days.
From $700,000 to, yes. The third one is to authorize the fire department to solicit a request for proposals for consultants to create an updated local hazard mitigation plan and a cooperative... to create an updated local hazard mitigation plan and a cooperative, fully-funded Long Beach Area F-F-F effort. Number four is to adopt a resolution adopting Alyssa projects for fiscal year 2021 funded by SB 1.
Yours are a little backwards from ours, but that's okay.
Yes, I was going to note that as soon as I got done. The Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. So on the agenda, that's the order that they were, but on the staff reports, item number three and four got switched in the package.
Yeah, no problem.
Can I, I have a question on item number three, and I think we have a public comment on item number two.
That's correct.
Okay. Can I just ask my question?
Sure.
Do you guys want me to pull it officially? Okay. Pre this particular seated council, but we had talked about kind of pulling back on the encroachments on Tremont Street. Has the city started that process yet of contacting homeowners?
No, we have not. Bob Greenlaw, do you want to come get a little bit? That's all tied into our Five Corners project.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we're still finalizing the furniture design as we work with the utility there, and so that would impact some of those encroachments. And so, once we get that final set of utility plans there, then we'd be ready to approach those, those property owners and then be willing to work with them to finalize the set of improvements that need to happen there.
Okay.
All the properties had been surveyed, and we know exactly how much of they've encroached into the city properties.
Okay.
And we tried to, when we did initially went through the second iteration of the design, we tried to be as kind of gentle as we could with those improvements, so that we weren't up too close to their buildings. So, I think what they'll see is that for the most part, you'll see the sidewalks be something that's a little bit further out from the buildings and still be allowed to keep some of those improvements there. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And we're going to talk about items...
Do you want to give us a question, Michael, for number two?
Yeah, so I have a public comment for item number two in regards to warrants. The comment that came in is from Carl Johnson. He writes, "Please read this into record for oral communication at the 7/7/2020 City Council meeting. On June 8th, I'm sorry, on June 18th, 2019, the City of Avalon entered into a one-year contract for law enforcement services agreement with Los Angeles County. The contracted amount is approximately 1.5 million for one year. At this meeting that occurred over one year ago, it was requested that the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Contract Services Department come over to the island and explain the cost of services. I do not recall this ever happening, and would like to request that they come to a future council meeting and explain the cost of service. Also, when will the law enforcement, or Los Angeles County Sheriff's contract come back to council for review? Because the law enforcement services agreement was only executed for fiscal year 1920. I urge you to enter negotiations with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's to recoup services that should have been rendered from Memorial Day weekend until the beginning of July. Although Avalon has not seen its full capacity yet, we are paying for a full contract that would include the support of reserve deputies for 40-plus days, and that we did not receive these services. All while services are being cut tremendously everywhere else within the city. This should come, this should be compensated by providing higher levels of service to make up for the days missed or a price reduction on the contract. The 40-plus days that we did not receive the level of service that we anticipated upon entering the agreement should amount to 10% or roughly 150,000 of the overall contract. I am also concerned with enforcement. When asking a member of the council how I should report an issue, they responded by telling me to contact the sheriff's department. When I contacted the sheriff's department, they told me to report it to City Hall. How does anything get enforced when you're asked to file a complaint and you're bouncing around like a ping-pong ball? Section 2.6 of the sheriff's agreement says, "While performing law enforcement services and functions under this agreement, every sheriff's department employee shall be authorized to enforce all city laws and regulations, including all city codes and ordinances. If this is how the contract is written, then why is LA County Sheriff's not doing their job? Tonight, you are approving warrants and payrolls for part of this exact timeframe that we did not receive full contracted services. Thank you for listening, and please consider these negotiations while you are faced with the city's ongoing tough decisions."
Thank you. Okay, council, it's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further comment? Call for the vote?
Sarah, I'm going to start the other way.
Oh, we're not going to, oh, we start with her.
We're not using our buttons. Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
I'm still in the middle, yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
Item number five?
Okay, item five is in general business, is this is to appoint, to fill the four terms of planning commissioners. Their seats will, they did expire at the end of June of 2020, and so we would be appointing four new ones, and their term would go all the way to 2024. We are asking you for two actions on this item, and the first one is to make the appointment of four individuals, and the mayor has made some recommendations, and that is to appoint the, the returning of the four that have just, their terms have ended, which is Bart Glass, Eric Kuert, Yolanda Moncanoce, and Sandra Putman. And then the second thing we're asking you to do is, it says eliminate on the staff report, I would just like to correct that word, to say suspend that seat temporarily, because we do want to keep it in the books, so when we have to implement it, that we're able to utilize that spot. We had, just as a case people don't know, that we implemented that seat just because we had a lot of planning commissioners at the time that had conflicts, so we needed an extra person to have a quorum, and...
So I would like to say, while I did interview everybody, the ones that were reapplying and also the new people, I'd like to thank the new applicants for coming out. It takes courage and commitment to put your name in the hat. However, at this time, I felt, you know, we have a number of council member, commissioners, a couple of them that are new and have only been on for a couple of years, so I do like to see that blend of old, the new with the old, and as they work together and develop, they're developing their rapport now, and will continue. So I would, my recommendation is to keep the commission as it is and reinstate those four.
Before we move forward, can I still abstain?
Yes.
Okay, I do want to abstain due to the appearance of a conflict of interest applicant as a family member.
Oh, okay. Okay. Any discussion or comments? Oh, you don't have to leave it.
She does.
Oh, she does?
Yes.
Are we going to talk? Oh, are you going for the vote?
I mean, just for...
Oh, appearance.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I will throw the motion on the table. I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation. We also, in addition to your comments, we also are, have some pretty significant changes in our planning department. Our planning director has retired, however, is graciously still working with us to help us get through this transition period, and that alone is, is just going to be a massive change, specifically also with the COVID that's been happening and, you know, furlough of staff time. There's just going to be so much going on to get us back up and running that I, I feel that change is good, but I also feel that too much change is unhealthy, and so I will put the motion on the table to, to move forward with Mayor Marshall's recommendation.
And also suspend the...
And also to suspend the alternate position.
Comments for a second?
I'll second.
Move to the second, comments?
Just a comment on suspending the alternate commission position. My only hesitation or concern with that is that the number of people that live and own homes on the same side of town near each other that would be on the commission would mean potentially that if certain items were meant to come up for that side of town, that the people available to vote would not be there, and potentially, there would be a lack of a quorum. I'm wondering if it makes sense to keep the, keep that position. I know we're not completely eliminating it, but I don't want us to get to the point where a homeowner or someone doing construction has to wait for us to appoint someone to that position to then be able to make a decision for them.
You're typically checking about 300 feet, right? So, I'm just kind of curious, because I don't know what 300 feet where you're seeing all of these people live, that own.
Right, the majority of them are on, there's a large number of them that are on Whitley and Marilla and Upper, Upper Whitley in that space. And so, looking at the people that live on that side of town and knowing that's a high-density location with the potential for a number of places that I think are currently up for sale, and knowing that that could be in the next couple of years, something that comes down, I just don't want us to get to a point where it literally delays someone by several weeks or even months because we don't have a quorum to be able to, to provide them with an answer on a request or a, any kind of variance.
Mayor, will you help? I don't think that that would actually come to pass. If we find that a majority of the planning commission did have a conflict, there was a provision in the Compulsives Insurance Law to re-activate someone, for lack of a better term, who has a conflict. There's a process by which we would draw straws, and that, and someone would, would be allowed to participate even though they did have a technical conflict of interest.
Okay, and that's happened on the council as well?
And additionally, this evening, you couldn't vote on an alternate because that application is a separate application, because it's for a two-year term versus a four-year term.
All right, okay. I appreciate your comments, Elisa, that's good. And thank you for the clarification, Elizabeth.
Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth.
Okay, Elizabeth, a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
And Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And for the record, one abstention, which is Councilmember De La Rosa.
You're standing, you can come back. Sure. I don't have a moment of standing for Mayor Pro Tem?
Sorry, no, I'm just, keep going, keep going. I'm just going to stand for a minute.
I understand, I understand. Okay, item number six.
Okay, item six is to discuss outdoor dining, and as Constance said, that, you know, there was probably a lot of flurry in town because the outdoor dining happened so quickly, and it happened quickly for the council. I was rapidly calling council on Thursday morning to let them know what transpired. So just to, let's just go through the timeline a little bit.
Okay.
So on the June 2nd City Council meeting, you did direct staff to start working on some outdoor dining ideas because of the, how restaurants had suffered the decreased number of people in the restaurants. I believe it's at 60%. Then on June 9th, even though that says, sorry, says June 4th, on June 9th though, because I looked through my emails today, I had received communication from two local restaurants asking to have some of my time to discuss the possibility of adding extra tables out on Middle Beach just to, so they could have more patrons, and that's still when indoor dining was allowed. Now, when you fast-forward to Wednesday, July 1st, when the governor issued that no more indoor dining, it caused a real flutter, and internally with staff, we're, okay, well, we've got a town, a lot of visitors coming to visit our community, what are we going to do? How are we going to service them? So I reached back out just to those two. My first call was to the two restaurants that had sent me the email and came in to speak to me, and just to said, well, since in light of what the governor has issued, are you still interested in pursuing outdoor dining? And they said yes. So then my second call was to Jim Lou Yohan at the chamber, and I want you to know that he was kind of voluntold. He graciously said he would accept that, and I said, if you could just help me spearhead this, I, really, we were fast coming up with guidelines, the protocol, how it would take place, but within an hour and a half, we had dining on the beach, so it just, it happened really fast. I had, when, as I said, I had to call each of the council members the next day to apologize because there was no indication, I didn't think it would roll out that fast. So once again, I do apologize to the council and to the public that they weren't given that notification. There was absolutely no time to have, hold a special meeting to unfold this, and mainly for the reason of it being 4th of July weekend, and we were hopeful that some visitors would be coming into our community. And because of our three-days-a-week meeting with our major stakeholders, we did know that hotels had visitors coming in, so we were trying to figure out a way to, to feed them. Go ahead, Dan. So we came up with two options, and the first one was dining out on the beach, and that would be from, say, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and that would allow the restaurants to set up their tables, and it was anything past the seawall facing the ocean. So we already have our benches on the Serpentine Wall that are spaced out, so a table could be there. These were our first ideas, and then as well as tables and chairs that would go on the beach. Another option that a restaurant could do, just because we had people coming in and not everybody could access the beach, is that if we did like boost that pre-prepared food, like if it's a fast sandwich or breakfast burritos, how are we feeding the people in town of those meals, as well as dining at nighttime? And that area was designated back behind the fountain, where back in 2011, when we were getting all kinds of requests, if you'll remember, for boosts on Front Street, they were doing all kinds of activities down there. The fire chief had submitted a plan to the, to staff, so when we were okaying booths, that we gave them designated spots. And behind the fountain to, as you're looking at the stage, to the left of the stage, all the way over to the Blue Water Restaurant, there are spaces for five 10-by-10 booths. So our temporary outdoor dining guidelines, the two above things would require certain things, and that's a completion of a City of Avalon special use permit, which council was provided that by email that's today, I believe, or yesterday, confirmation from the businesses that they were adhering to all LA County Health Department and ABC guidelines. Now, did they over the weekend? As I said, it came too fast and furious, so they will be filling out all these applications and providing all this information. They did provide before they got on the beaches, though, insurance to name the city as, and all its employees and agents additionally insured, and that's per our PARSAC rules, as well as what's in our Avalon Municipal Code. The restaurants would be responsible for gathering and disposing of all the trash, because one of the concerns was that they, they would take the trash and then put it in city trashcans along Front Street, but they know that they have to empty that trash and put it in their own commercial bins. Then another concern that was brought up, so we made sure that the fire chief went down, and he looked in all the restaurants after night of putting all the way their tables, to make sure that where they were putting all their equipment away, that there was still emergency access, in case there was a fire in the middle of the night, or the sheriffs needed to get in, that there would be emergency access. Our temporary outdoor dining, so special use permits. I want to stress that this is a temporary solution, temporary, and that, if the governor extends it and says, oh, it's going to be for another six months, we'll be back here in three weeks to figure out what we're going to do. The permits can be revoked if they don't follow what's in our guidelines. Any damage to city property, of course, is their responsibility. And at this, at this time, I was not proposing a fee, council, and I figured on Tuesday night that that's something you could address, so at the end, I will be asking you if that's something you want to do. I did want to point out that the only monies we've been getting from them right now would be our sales tax. When you adopted the fee schedule a few weeks ago, we did put a brand-new fee in there, and that was for the use of public beaches, and it is $290, and that's for a special event on the beach. I don't think that that, personally, that that was going to be appropriate for, for the restaurants that we were trying to see succeed after all this time. And I want to, another, and I guess I shouldn't respond to rumors, but Jim is, once again, was voluntold to do this, and he did it. We did not pick, hand-pick the restaurants that we wanted to be on the beach, it was the ones that had expressed interest. And Jim did reach out to all of them through his contacts, and so he has heard back from quite a few. So this are where we stand currently. The approved ones have been Steve Steakhouse, Maggie's Blue Ro... The approved ones have been Steve's Steakhouse, Maggie's Blue Rose, Lou Alare's, and Endemic. The pending, oh, sorry, there's one correction. Coyote Joe's, I believe, has finalized their application. Jim could come forward if he has extra things to say through this. El Gallion has a pending one, Toyong Grill, Micasita, and the M. And then on to the right side is the ones that have not requested an application. But I think that Michael Palmer told me today that the Cantina had reached out. They were not looking for a beach, though they were looking for somewhere on Front Street. So that's something else we can discuss. Only where the food booths were gonna be. So the next one, they're just maps in case, so the Palapa Beach, in my generation, it was called Muscle Beach. So whatever you want to call it. We have no request for that area right now. And then South Beach is where we have Lou Alare's and Endemic there. And then Toyong Grill has requested to be there, as well as Micasita and, is the other one, Jim? I just said? Oh, Coyote Joe's.
Coyote Joe's.
So Coyote Joe's would be on South Beach. Oh, sorry. The next one, Dan.
I'm confused on my beaches all of a sudden. Because you've got, you've got Muscle Beach, then that beach there is South Beach, next going left. And that is where Endemic, that's where all of those four businesses were set up?
No, on South Beach, we have Lou Alare's and Endemic.
Okay, on the right, you're looking at the pier, on the right side of the pier is where?
South Beach.
Okay, and that's where, that's where Maggie's and Steve's is?
No.
They're on Middle Beach.
They're on Middle Beach.
To the left of the pier?
Where you go.
Yes, okay, now I'm seeing it. And I was down there twice, I should, okay.
Where you sunbathe, Mayor.
Yeah. In my, in my mask and my full, all my clothes. Okay.
So Middle Beach is Steve's Steakhouse, Maggie's Blue Rose, and also requested is El Gallion. So Coyote Joe's would be over on South Beach though.
Okay.
This is just the area behind the wall, behind the fountain. I apologize that it's blurry, but I think you know where that is. That's where the Beer Garden always is when we have our concerts. And then we've had one request for Step Beach, and that was from the M. So now, due to the increased demand, it's going to require us to, to figure out a way how to designate these areas. And it's gonna limit the, the tables that each of the restaurants can use because I, I do say that Maggie's and Steve's has spread out beautifully. So has Endemic and Lou Alare's. But the more people that we have that are wanting, utilizing the beaches, we're gonna have to figure out designated areas for it.
Well, so basics, okay, maybe I am right in that, at least that Maggie's and Steve's has taken over that whole beach.
Yes, they've done a wonderful job of spreading out.
I know.
And now they won't be able to have that many tables.
Right, right, yeah. Let's go back to this little stuff on the first page about temporary, the guidelines, just a couple of comments. You say between 5:00 and 10:00. What, what's happening is they're setting up at about 4:30, and they're moving people off the beach. So if we, however we move forward, I think we need to have strict guidelines on when they actually can start pushing, not pushing people off the beach. We're gonna have to create signage that says, effective this time, please move. So that they know, and so now, I'm sure the staff has been good, but could be feel a little abrupt. You know, and we still want people to enjoy and be able to sit on the beach in some area if they don't, you know, wanna play with their kids and romp in the sand. I think to, because we don't, I think we still need to consider that as well. Because not everybody wants to go out and buy dinner. So I don't know how we balance that. So that's just my first comment.
Was there any issues this week or this weekend?
I, I, it's a very valid point that, you know, people are enjoying the beach and the weather's been so beautiful that they're, you know, usually in that area where the outdoor diners want to be. So then the, the restaurants are asking people to move so they can set up the tables. It is not a perfect situation or solution. And I will say that a few of the restaurants have stated, it's not easy moving all the tables in and out. It is not ideal for them either. So I'm sure if they had their preference, they would be back inside their restaurants with just a few tables out there, which would be lovely.
And let me ask a couple, one more general question. If Pancake Cottage were open, or let's say Coyote Joe's, Coyote Joe's, that is their patio. That is not the city's, that's on private property, correct?
Correct.
So they're, they don't pay us for outdoor dining? The 350 square foot, they don't have to do that?
I think they extended out, Annie, they might pay a little bit.
Currently, oh, here comes Matt. The question, also with Avalon Grill, if Avalon Grill was open, would they be paying us that?
They pay a lease to us, yes.
Okay, so I guess, and Jack's with their two little, go ahead, Matt.
Yes, with the two little tables, Original Antonio's pays for that spot.
Okay.
I was just gonna clarify Coyote Joe's also does pay for their encroachment on the sidewalk.
Okay, so I guess if we're, if we're not making these folks pay, if that's the way the council goes, then I don't know why we should make those people pay. I mean, to be fair, if they're using their, if they're using that space, I mean?
No, that's their typical, the way I view it is that's their typical space and they're lucky enough to have outdoor dining in a general perspective. I would see it as Coyote Joe's, and I'm just throwing this out there. I, I don't even think that this is possible. But it would almost be great if we could hoard it off half of that part of Catalina and even Sumner if need be, and allow them to expand out on the walkway rather than go to the beach. I have a concern with a lengthy delivery from a restaurant to a beach and making sure that food is safe and handled appropriately and whatnot. And I'm sure everybody's doing a great job. But if we have, like we see in other cities where they're doing little pocket parks and whatnot on their streets, closing streets down to traffic, to me, it would seem like, like out in front of Coyote Joe's, let them spread out into that section there on Catalina Street so that they're, they're still close by their restaurant.
Right.
And then we just make, you know, half of that street for, for walkability and the other half allow them for?
And here comes Steve.
I had spoken to Denise about that, but when you, when you look at it, with the way the palm trees and the planters are, it would make it difficult for an emergency vehicle to get through.
Yeah.
Exactly, I, I can't support putting tables and chairs out onto Crescent Avenue. I'm in complete support of a temporary situation like this where we allow, excuse me, allow the, the restaurants to move their tables and chairs out on the stand. But that was some of the work that Jim and I worked through on Friday, was where they started expanding out into, onto Lower Catalina. And it started, quickly turned into a free-for-all until we could get that taken care of.
Right.
And I couldn't support that because between the tables and chairs and then pedestrians, we would lose our emergency access.
Are we able to use that parking lot? Or no?
No.
Mayor, I, I would like to comment on the leases. The people, yes, they are paying a lease to us monthly. The difference that I saw was that they're on public property 365 days out of the year. And this was a three-week temporary thing. Should we charge something? That's up to you guys. I just, at that time, I didn't know. Why would I charge number one?
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not in agreement, but I'm saying if, I was just curious about the other part.
Yeah, no, it was, it was a great question. I have been asked by several of our staff members, why are you doing that? Why aren't you charging? And that's my rationale of why.
But they, they would still have the opportunity, if we didn't allow the other restaurants to go to the beach, they would still have the opportunity of doing business off of their patios. So we're providing them that space. So I, I would agree that we would, we would continue to charge rent.
Okay. I do wanna, went down on Friday evening with the high tides to check on stuff and was chatting with Margaret and some of her crew and Steve's crew as they were cleaning up. I do want to ask if it is possible in these guidelines to potentially suspend 10 o'clock as the time that this would stop? Because of the, even though there's a greater capacity outside currently, the way that they were setting up with the number of tables they had, when we do start to limit down how many tables can be on the beach for each location, I have a feeling that the dining, at least on the weekends when there are more people in town, may go past that 10 o'clock time and don't want them to feel that they're then rushing that last table off the beach because they have to be off by 10.
Right.
The noise from a fairly large family party was insignificant, especially in comparison to what places like some of the bars might carry on a regular evening. I'd be curious to hear some feedback from the Front Street properties. But I, it was, people were respectful and kind. And while they were not wearing masks finishing up dinner, they were not any louder than regular passersby. And in fact, two passersby were way louder than the whole table of 10 to 15, oh, spread out over a couple of tables. So that's a question I have. The other question that I brought up to Denise was just making sure that we are looking at the city public restrooms and discussing that that is addressed if people are not, either are or are not able to access the restrooms in the restaurants themselves. And I'm assuming the traffic to the public restrooms on the pier will gain traction significantly at night. And so having attendants be able to be out there later in the evening to assist with that would be important and potentially necessary. I don't, I, I think for this time period with everything that's going on with COVID and everything that has already taxed a very challenging year, I, I don't think I agree with charging right now. I do think there's potential for this to be something to look at for future seasons. The feedback from people and the photos from people have been amazing and impressive and beautiful and something that people in a lot of other seaside communities are able to experience. I think that I personally would like to see that be something that we work out to do. The question of people on the beach, especially later into the evening, I think that the opportunity to map out where people can place tables and at what time needs to be, yes, fully signed so people are aware of that when they sit down. But also looking at potentially taking that first four to six feet on the edge of the seawall into the sand on the upper level and keeping that kind of window of space for people that want to stay on the beach later in the evening. And having that be the thing that restaurants then tell people, hey, we're gonna set up tables here, but you're welcome to sit on this front edge of the beach and be able to have that space and still enjoy your evening perfectly fine, so.
So you bring up two points. Somebody had said that Steve start, stops taking orders at 9:30. So if they, if it was something like that, the last order was at 9:30, then you'd know they'd pretty, and, and you know, and Steve's not gonna want him to sit out on the, sit out on the beach for three hours to be able to load up the tables.
Sure.
So I'm sure, so maybe something like that would be reasonable.
I think I was out at about 11:15, 11:30, and it was, they were still wrapping up. So, and their team was still putting tables back away and that type of thing. So I think that even if you have it at 9:30, that, that lag time of both, the people enjoying their meal because they're outside and people tend to slow down when they're outside eating. But also then having that cleanup time afterwards. I don't think 10 o'clock for all of that to happen is a reasonable expectation, so.
Yeah.
I'm happy to push until 11:00. That's if we just need to throw something out there.
Yeah, I think to put an hour, but I think that they last call for alcohol is 9:30 or something like that so that they will get them off of the, off of the beach.
My question would be, off of the beach by 11:00? Or that they could serve until 11:00?
Yeah, that's my question. Well, I mean.
You've gotta be kind of specific on when are you gonna take your last table?
Yeah.
Okay, but let's also look at the flip side of this. Our bars are not open. There is not a lot for people to do. If a restaurant is willing and wants to stay open later and wants to take a dinner at 11:00 o'clock, and that's what they choose is their, their thing that they want to do, I'm in favor of that. What's happening now is, you know, there's not a lot open. And what we saw in some, I'm, I only know of a couple of examples, is that you're pushing people back to the hotel earlier than you normally would. So now we're seeing more parties in the hotels. You're seeing more activity where you would normally see people out and about. So given the fact that there is not as much to do in the evening that there used to be during these three weeks or during this COVID situation, I'm fine if they want to serve dinner till midnight. You know, I, I just, I think that we need to have space and things for people to do. And if a business chooses to stay open late, I think we should allow them to.
Well, I don't say, well, we have a noise ordinance at 10:00. And I'm a little concerned is once we get all the Front Street with, with things, I mean, you've got hotels there, you've got the Vista Del Mar, the Edgewater, the MacRae, then we're gonna start getting complaints because if I'm sitting there at 12:00 drinking my tequila, I'm gonna be shitfaced and loud at 11:00 or 12:00 o'clock.
So some of those people were.
So I think, sorry.
I mean, I understand that.
Some of those people were, but they also are not as loud as the bars.
Sorry, Denise.
The Gallion with karaoke, the, the things that normally happen on a regular summer night, that would increase the noise volume on the Front Street. None of that is in place. It, it was, it honestly was, it was like, it was so eerily quiet. It was kind of strange to be down there on the Friday before 4th of July and have it literally be just that.
So we say off the beach at 11:00 or take your last order?
I, I personally don't know that I have a worry with that right now. I think when we get to the point, if, 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 if we get to the point where we want to make this a thing that we do on a regular basis, then yeah, we're gonna have to have that discussion. But these three weeks, I don't have an issue with them staying open later. If it's servicing the community, if it's allowing people to have a place to sit and eat and drink, if it's taking traffic out of certain spaces and spreading it out where there's actually space to gather, I don't know that I have an issue with that right now.
And, and I, I agree, but I'm, the snarkiness in me is gonna come out. It's, okay, yeah, we can force you off the beach because we're gonna set up all the tables. But we're not gonna force anybody, you know, we're not gonna force them off the beach so that their tables can stay there. That, that's the snarky meme coming out.
That's not snarky, that's a valid point.
I guess I was just thinking like, making sure that they have enough time to put away their things correctly, you know? That's where the leader of the time.
I don't know, Captain Hawking?
Is there any?
Sorry to put you on the spot, but do you have any thoughts?
I know that Harbor is normally one of the ones policing the beaches at night too. So JJ, I don't know if you have any input as well?
They are? Yeah. They do walks on the pond though.
Yes, ma'am. The sheriff's department really doesn't have any concerns with if it's later, earlier. My only concern would be the same is Chief Krug. We want to make sure we can get emergency vehicles down there. And I've heard some suggestions from people in the community. Well, if we block Sumner or block Catalina, you guys could come off Metropole and drive down there. But that's not, sometimes those seconds would matter depending on person not breathing, getting somebody there to start CPR, whatever it might happen to be. So my only concern is the ones that Mike Krug brought up. The rest of it, we're totally good with it, whatever you'd like to do.
Okay. And lighting, what are we, are they just doing little candles on the tables? How are they lighting those tables in the dark? Jim, do you know? It seems like, did I see candles on the tables? Not that I'm saying candles are bad, I'm just wondering.
I don't think I saw candles on the tables. There's enough lighting on the beach and from the businesses themselves that I felt like it was still the, I know that at the end of the night, their teams, their crew are going through and literally cell phone lighting the beach to check for any trash or waste. So that was what they were using, but I didn't, I don't think I noticed any lighting on the tables.
I can only picture tabletop and whether, I don't know if they were actual flame or battery-powered.
Little something on the table.
I can only picture that. There's, there's some fairly bright spots on the beach. And I would imagine by the second night, they had figured out where to put tables. So they had more light cast on the tabletops too. And it's like, you know, till nearly 9:00 right now anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the only other question that I had, besides those kind of discussion points and suggestions, was originally a business that is primarily open during the day had asked about having outdoor dining when they were worried about the capacity for their location. I know that they had talked with Chief Krug, I think, yesterday. Julia had reached out regarding the brew house and didn't know if there was any discussion on daytime usage and what that would look like. But do you also want to say thank you to both the brew house? Well, if you want to come up, we'll have a chat in a minute. But thank you to both the brew house and to the Avalon Grill for offering other restaurants their outdoor seating space when they weren't being used.
Wow.
Which is pretty awesome and amazing. So if you see any crew from there, just to give them a quick thanks.
Well, would that cover that, that eight to whatever hours on the takeout booth for them to, to take stuff there?
Potentially, yes. I don't know if that's what the solution was. I, I had said, you know, maybe it's worth talking to the grill potentially to see if that side space would be available during the day to use for the brew house. The other, and because of the proximity, it's closer to deliver hot food there.
Sure.
The other question that I had had, which I don't know if we even want to look at as a at as a potential, depending on how many people end up applying, is if a portion of the pier is advisable to use across from Eric's and across from the lifeguard stand. Um, there, I don't know if the spacing is there, we'd have to measure it out and see, but I don't know if that's an option potentially too, as an area that is not so much a public right-of-way, would still have room to bring a vehicle up on if you need to for emergency services, but might be able to do like a two-top or even a, a bench seating with a table only, no table access on the actual walkway side, um, for an option, so.
I have, you brought up an interesting point, Lisa, was the bathrooms. Right now, what time do we stop, um, what time, so the last time they clean those bathrooms?
Usually out at the mall, it was out after the last boat. I'd have to ask, um, our contractors and it is a good point and I don't have the answer though, if people are able to access the restaurant to go into the bathroom. I don't see a difference between that and the, uh, going into a retail business, but I can clarify with public health on that.
I'm just concerned that we're gonna need to spend more time cleaning those bathrooms and so...
Oh, that, that's no problem, Mayor.
So, that's where I'm thinking, you know, if you charge them even a buck a night a table, I mean, maybe that would pay for a couple of extra, you know what I mean?
We have already increased their contracts, um, Mayor, because of increased visitors, so it would be, uh, in, in that.
Well, maybe they would wanna donate.
In, increased, let's be clear though, increased visitors from what we had three months ago when we've been actually shut down.
That is correct.
But overall, from the statistics that we've received, our overall visitor persons coming to the island is 70% less.
That is correct.
So, I just wanna be, when we're talking about, um, you know, the, the, the bathrooms are being used a little bit more, but the number of people that are in town this weekend is 70% less than a normal 4th of July weekend. And I don't know, that being our largest weekend of the year, I don't know that those numbers are gonna increase significantly as the summer goes on.
I'm just talking about extended hours. If we, if they need to be cleaned, the bathroom's at 12:00 o'clock to be ready, you know, or 11:00 o'clock at night because of all the use from all the people there and not going, able to go to the restaurants, the bathroom, that could create...
No, and I understand what you're saying, I just wanted to put it into perspective that even, even last year, if, if the contract's last visit was at 9:00 at night, you still have so many more people out going, you know, bar-to-bar and whatnot that were still using the public restroom, so...
But they go to bar and bar, they have a bathroom, is the difference. And they have a bathroom in the restaurants. So, and they're not gonna let them walk up to Steve's to go to the bathroom, I'm sure.
Right.
So, that's just, if it turns out to be a cluster, I think if we could, you know, maybe we could just ask for a simple little donation or something to help pay for that extra fee because we really, there's not a lot of sales tax, it's, I don't know, well, help me out, Jim, you probably know better than ever, or Matt, what kind of sales tax do you get off of a dinner when we only get 1% of the sales tax anyway? It's a minimal amount of money we make out of, off the restaurant.
I'll just put in my two cents. Under no circumstances am I interested in charging the restaurateurs any sort of fee to use the beach during this emergency situation. So, if you guys wanna talk more about that, that's great, I just wanted to throw out there that, uh, going forward, if we do something down the line, as we talk months down the line, then maybe that might be something to take into consideration and look at all facets of it, but during this emergency, I, I'm not...
Well, and this emergency right now is maybe only three weeks?
We're only, we're 16 more days. And that's provided that the governor listed it on July 23rd.
And then if he listed, then we have that other decision, are we gonna carry this out all summer when they can go back into the restaurant? So, that's the next thing we need to be thinking about for us.
So, that being said, Mayor, we were gonna come back with, to you originally before all of this unfolded so quickly with proposals of where you would like, you were gonna, you were going to approve where the outdoor dining was going to be. So, before we get to the point of we just say nothing, we will come back with a plan for you to consider, uh, spaces for the restaurants that are down to 60%.
Steph did a great job getting all this together and, and Jim, thank you as well. I don't think there's any of us who don't support what's going on, um...
And Steve Ray is in the audience?
Oh, there he is, in the back. Hey, Steve, oh, and Matt, did you wanna talk first, since you walked up here? He'll probably say, "Charge them."
That's not what I'm gonna say, I just wanted to add on the topic of sales tax. Bars and restaurants make up our largest sales tax producers in town and make up about 70% of our, 60-some, 70% of our, our sales tax revenue in town, so it is bars and the restaurants, um, that do contribute to our, our citywide sales tax, um, so, just putting that out.
So, let me ask a question, when I buy, buy a beer at JL's, they, they, and it's $6, they subtract the sales tax out of that and report it?
That's, yes.
That's how it goes? Okay.
If they, yeah.
And we get 1% of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Steve, did you wanna comment?
Bartenders don't have time to do all that change because you're working in solid dollars.
Thank you, council members. Um, I have been watching and you've had questions and I wanted to answer and I know I have two minutes, so I wrote everything down and then you can ask me questions after this, okay?
Thank you.
Number one, um, we have asked no one to leave on the beach, actually right about this time and I had told you before and I wrote the letter that I watched this every night for 20 years and that's why I approached and hey, would you mind if I, you know, ta, take a little spot on the beach at first before COVID hit and right that? And basically what we do is we take our, our, our tables out to the planner and that, we have plenty of work to do and there's empty spots by 4:00, 4:30 anyway, and we put our tables in the empty spots. As the people leave, that's when we, that's when we put the tables in the other spots. We give, we've been sort of taking the whole beach and right that, give plenty of room right that, there's plenty of room for every, everybody else. The galleon, when they come in, we'll, we'll welcome them with open arms and help them any way we can too, there's plenty of room for them too. Um, 10:00 you're talking about is fine, we've been, we went till 10:00 during July 4th weekend, it was a holiday and there was a bunch of people trying to celebrate and right that. We, right now, uh, for the last three nights, we've been closing at 9:00. We're a restaurant, we're not a bar, okay? People are sitting down at the tables and they're having dinner and they're drinking. People aren't sitting down and having tequila shots and getting drunk and yelling. I haven't seen it the whole time, but at the same time, I've only been there for six days, okay? There have been zero issues, zero. After the people are done, we take all the stuff back and we clean the beach with a fine tooth comb because I know for a fact that someone's gonna be trying to find some piece of paper the next day and say, "Steve left some trash on the, on the, uh, on the beach." I know we're totally look, being looked like, uh, looked at with a microscope right now under this special conditions, okay? People are not using your restrooms, to let you know this, they're not. I have not seen one time. You guys, I don't know who's saying that and right that, people are using our restrooms. We have restrooms, yeah, we have restrooms in Steve's Steakhouse, we let them up, we have to mask up.
It wasn't saying that you were...
They go to Steve's Steakhouse and they go to Maggie's, but to come in, you have to mask up.
Okay, great.
Okay? But they're not using your restrooms.
Yeah.
And people who are sometimes walking by, uh, actually if it's full or something like that, we'll direct them to the City of Avalon Restrooms because they're not our customers.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't use your restrooms. Um, we have, uh, been closing at 9:00, okay, and then all the people are eating, drinking. Oh, and I just wanted to tell you also, you need to figure this, you need to, you need to put this in, in mind, okay? If the, if the Blue Water was open, for sure, they'd be doing 300 to 400 dinners a night. If the Al Galleon was open, they'd be doing 300 to 400 dinners a night. I'm already doing it, I already usually do that already. Maggie's too, 300. Grill, 300. Where are these people eating? We're tr, we're trying to help the city out and I, we could do it and right that, but, you know, I, I have heard really good compliments, hey, you're Steve, you're doing a great job, this is beautiful, everybody eating there is just loving it on the beach, oh, we'd like to see this more. Basically, I'm happy to do it for three weeks. There's no way I could do this for more than three weeks. This is very, very labor-intensive and, uh, but the, but there, the boats aren't stopping, you know, there's more people coming over day and right that. We have to be, you know, welcoming at the same time, uh, you know, so we're trying to feed all these people, but there's plenty of room for everybody and, you know, I, I think there's a little hate because Steve's and Maggie's, there's like, there's plenty of room for everybody. The galleon wants to come in, welcome, come on up, come on up, there's, everybody's doing just fine.
Great.
Uh, Coyote Joe's asked me how to do it, it's like, hey, this is what you do, do, I've been helping them all the way. It's not like we're trying to grab anything or we're not trying to, you know, you know, maybe the cash register is ringing, but at the same time, we're trying to do, you know, be, welcome the visitors.
Yes. No, and you've done a, oh, and you have, you've had, done a great job, it did come on quickly and like she says, we, none of this conversation has been able to happen, so I'm so glad that you came up today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I thank, I thanked the City of Avalon and the councilmen, I thanked, uh, for letting us, you know, be on the beach at this time and it's sort of fun, but it's not fun either, you know?
I can't imagine at the end of the day...
Very, very labor-intensive and there's a lot of hours involved in it and right that. But thank you very much and if there have any other questions, I was just here, but I wanted to answer your questions as I was watching and right that.
I'm glad you did, thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
Now, you gotta get back to work, right?
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions then.
Yes.
So, do you wanna modify the hours?
I say yes.
Yeah? Yes. Do you want me to put 11:00, just the patrons are gone by 11:00? Gives them time to...
Yeah, and then if they close out earlier than that, that's not a problem, but the, I mean, either way, I don't think, because law enforcement would be the one to say, excuse me, getting people off the beach and you know they're not gonna do that anyway. So, uh, and I'm not saying that in a mean way, but, you know, they're not gonna kick people off a chair, so...
And then do you wanna implement a fee?
No.
Not at the same.
And, uh, how about the locations?
I think they're...
I'm good with them?
Yeah, the locations are fine.
Let me ask you a question, is Matt, whatever, Affolder or whatever, where is he on that hot dog cart? Is he interested in all of doing this thing? Do you know?
Um, I did talk to him today, um, he is, he thinks he's about a month out from having his commissary up, so he's got a few more hoops to come out, they need to come and inspect it. Uh, as requested, he's trying to get it set up for two carts, um, and so, like I said, he's about, about 30 days out.
Okay, all right, 'cause I was hoping if he needed space that we'd be able to accommodate him. So, and we wanna use the, if anybody wants to come forward on the Beer Garden location, just, that'd be fine too, right?
Yeah.
Okay? And what else, Denise?
That was it, we answered all the questions.
Good, this is good.
We have to go to the hospital meeting now.
Yes, and that...
We're not done.
What's that?
We're not done.
I know, dear, this is yours.
Thank you for your input.
You're welcome, thank you for all this work.
Great job to the city, you guys really kicked this out.
In six days, getting all this together and whatever. Jim, thank you. That's for the mask as well, Jim. Okay.
Call to order, uh, the Avalon Board...
Oh, wait, should I, should I close this one first?
Sure.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Sorry.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay. Call to order of the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees. Will it call Denise?
Thank you. Trustee Lavelle?
Here.
Trustee, um, Marshall?
Yes.
And Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee De La Rosa?
Here.
Chairman Ponce?
Here. Uh, presentations?
Uh, we have none. I have no written or, no written communication.
Oral communication. Members of the public may address the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers shall limit comments to two minutes each.
I have no comments.
See no one rush up? Consent calendar.
Okay, on our consent calendar, we have two items. We have the minutes from the June 16, uh, Hospital Board of Trustees meeting. We, on item two, we have the CEO's report for June and the CFO's, uh, may report.
I make a motion to approve items one and two?
A second.
Any comments, discussion? Call for the vote.
Trustee Lavelle?
Aye.
Trustee Ponce?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Cassidy?
Aye.
Trustee De La Rosa?
Aye.
Any members report?
I have none.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, Tony. I hope Tony's still watching us.